Good evening and welcome to the Canby Urban Renewal Agency Special Meeting for March 3, 2021. I will call the meeting to order. We have citizen input and community announcements. Melissa, Joe, Scott, do we have anybody for announcements today?
We do not.
Perfect. All right, well then, moving on quickly, it's consent agenda. I will take a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes the minutes from the February 3, 2021. You are a special meeting.
So moved?
Second.
Second.
All right, so I have a motion by Vice Chair Hodgson and second by Commissioner Spoon. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. New business, we are going to consider a facade improvement grant application from Yonso Jung for a business located at 356 Northwest First Avenue, Rice Time. Scott, go ahead.
Thank you Chair Barwig and Urban Renewal Commissioners. For the first item, Jamie Stickel, our Economic Development Director, will give you a quick staff report on this facade grant that you're considering.
Good evening, I'm Jamie Stickel, Economic Development Director. So we received an application for facade improvement construction grant for the commercial property located at 356 Northwest First Avenue, which is Rice Time. The applicant intends to update their facade to improve the property by including a new awning. As you will see in your packet, the awning that they currently have in place is a little weathered and seems to have had some damage over the years. Calvin reached out to our design committee members and their comments were very supportive. Supporting up the idea, I love the idea of a new awning here. The existing one is tired and outdated. It can be seen from 99E, so I'm grateful it will be replaced. My only recommendation is maybe the owner could get just a slight bit more creative with the font, but as the proposal shows, it would be a huge improvement. The second comment was, I think this proposed facade improvement for Rice Time is a great idea. I think the new awning is much more in keeping with the surrounding buildings. I fully support this proposed improvement. And so since 2010, just as some background, the Canby Urban Renewal Agency has funded construction grants up to $25,000. And this is with private businesses, or private buildings rather. So we can have business owners or property owners submit the application. Calvin noted that the application is strong and in that it will replace a damaged and unsightly existing awning. As you saw in the attached photo and subsequent information, there are two bids, which is what is required as part of the facade improvement program. The fiscal impact would be a grant of up to $25,000, although they do not anticipate obviously using up to that amount. So the two options before you this evening, approve matching grant of up to $25,000 for Yonso Jung under the guidelines of the Canby Facade Improvement Program, or decline matching grant of $25,000 for Yonso Jung under the guidelines of the Canby Facade Improvement Program. Staff recommends that the agency approve the allocation of the matching grant funds for this project, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Jamie. Let's go with Commissioner Spoon.
Thank you Chair. A couple of questions. One, were obviously the estimates for the work are significantly below $25,000. If we approve up to $25,000, are they limited to the work that we're approving, the awning that was on the application?
Not necessarily. We have had people in the past, you know, let's say they pull down the awning and then the framing needs to be replaced. They don't anticipate that that is going to be the case, particularly from what it sounds like with our planning department working with their sign company. But it gives a little bit of freedom in that way, which is why it's written, written up to $25,000. And then as staff, we keep track of how much we're actually expending. So when this project is closed out, we'll know how much we spent, obviously, but that will give us some freedom. Typically, we approve three applications per year, but if we did, you know, three applications at $10,000 apiece, we would have quite a bit more bandwidth to be able to approve different projects. So it's written to allow some flexibility, but then we keep track of it so that we can make sure we're managing applications that we receive.
Okay, I probably didn't ask my question specifically enough. Are they limited to kind of awning work, or could they come back and say, oh, now we're also doing the windows, or you know what I mean? Like if we...
Yes, I, yeah, I hear what you're saying. Yes, I suppose so, because you're approving up to the $25,000 for facade improvement. And then we have, we present the information as we have received it. So if for some reason, windows was the next step that they decided that they wanted to work on, it would give them, again, the flexibility to do that work. We would still require bids. So it's not just, you provided the two bids, you've got this grant free for all, it's still that they would have to provide bids. We have the cutoffs of under $15,000, over $15,000. And then, and frankly, then if it would go over $15,000, then we would need additional bids. So yes.
And then my last question, just for clarity, because I know we have some new commissioners that might be helpful to learn about, is once, once someone gets approved for a grant, regardless of how much of it they use, when are they eligible to apply for the program again, or are they ever eligible?
They are eligible to apply for the program again. So it is one time in a fiscal year for a specific property. So let's say this application or another application used up to $25,000 for the facade that was visible on First Avenue, like this one is. And, and so that would kind of check that box that they are done for this year, but that the next fiscal year, they decided that they wanted to focus on the back of the building, for example, as visible from Second Avenue, which this one is, they would be eligible to apply for that grant again.
Awesome, I'm excited this is getting done. I was driving by it and walking by it over the last few weeks, thinking it would be a perfect candidate for this program, so.
Yes.
Thanks for your work.
There you go. Commissioner Parker, you had a question?
Actually, Jamie answered it, but I will offer a comment. Perhaps like a lot of us, my, my exercise these days is walking, and I've been doing up and down for Second and Third Avenues a lot. So I've been taking a look at this property, and I'm thrilled that they are doing this. And probably not very many remember, maybe Brian does, that how, what a great sport Rice Time was during our reconstruction of First Avenue. We had to lay down some boards at times, and, and they had an entrance in back, but they were very supportive of us, at a time when not everybody could see what First Avenue was eventually going to become. So it's, it's a neat, neat little coda to the saga of the city investing $3.2 million into First Avenue and undergrounding the electricity on First Avenue, and now having Rice Time come back and apply for the grant. So I think it's a terrific job. Thank you.
Commissioner Bangs?
Chairman, I move that we approve the facade application for the grant for Rice Time.
Perfect. Is there a second? And Commissioner Spoon is the second. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
And that's unanimous. All right, next on the agenda is the annual report.
Hello again. So Commissioners, this is the required annual report that we are to provide our Urban Renewal Agency. That can be done in writing or, or by a presentation, and we are choosing to give you a presentation, just because we think it will be beneficial to talk through that. It also gives us a chance to highlight some of the things that we've been doing. And, and so with that, this will be kind of a tag team presentation. Jamie Stickel will be back up again to do part of the presentation, and then Julie Blums, our Finance Director, will, will also help with the financial part of this. And then we want to leave some time for discussion or questions with you that you might have.
Okay. Just give us one moment, we're going to start sharing our screen. It's the PowerPoint, the 2019-2020 PowerPoint.
Okay, because you have to show the screen, you guys try. Do you, the six?
Yes. We won't be together for 15 minutes. Okay, and can everybody see my screen? The, should say, 2019-2020 Canby Urban Renewal Report?
Yes, we see it.
Great, so as, as Scott Archer said earlier, that Jim Stickel, Economic Development Director, and Julie Blums, who is our Finance Director, we will be splitting this report in half. Depending on which one you ask, we get the better half. So I'm going to kick it off with talking, giving a brief overview of the projects that we have taken a look at over the, and worked on over the last year. And so just as a reminder, before we get started, this is looking at 2019-2020 for the project overview. So some of this information might feel a little bit dated, but none of it should be very new. It's all projects that have come before you in various ways over the last year. So first, we'll start talking about industrial park access. And, and I'm going to, when I give my overview, it will be a kind of a brief overview of, with some financials. Julie Blums is going to present later to some of the financials that will be, will have their more, the more specific numbers. So what you'll see is, you know, 600,000 is a good example. She will dial into those numbers a little bit further. So we addressed the industrial park connection to 99E, which is Walnut Street extension from the industrial park. We spent approximately $600,000 on that project in 1920, which included the purchase, the property purchase of 3.71 acres at where Southeast First Avenue and Walnut Street come together. Additionally, we put in or installed a traffic signal at Sequoia Parkway and Hazel Dell Way, which is where Fred Myers is located. And that cost approximately $711,000. That was in a way to address some of the traffic concerns that we've seen with the increase in companies building in the industrial park, as well as homes being built on the south end of town. Further work was done on the downtown quiet zone and Gateway Arch. The quiet zone, approximately $250,000 was spent with engineering, PBS engineering, to be exact. Additionally, paying with the railroad and then right of way acquisition. Approximately $52,000 was spent on the Gateway Arch, and contract was approved for both of those projects, February 3 of 2021. The former library building, in fall of 2019, the city was working with LRS Architects, and that was to explore what it would take to do a public market. We've spent approximately $22,000 on that project, and one of those things that we had asked from them was a cost analysis. That cost analysis came back at far greater than we had anticipated needing to spend on the building. And so we reopened the request for expressions of interest in February of 2020. Additional investments, so $471,000 spent on the remodel of the Canby Fire District. Approximately $20,000 spent for electricity and new streetlights in Wake Park. And then approximately 46 spent on facade improvement grants with the facade improvement program. And then I will turn it over to Julie for the financial overview.
Okay, we're going to try to keep this at a high level, because I'm sure you guys are going to have a lot of questions. But this first slide just really gives you a summary of all the different projects that we have done with the Urban Renewal District from day one. And this district has accomplished many, many, many things. At the end of the day, as of June 30, 2020, we still have about $6.7 million in maximum indebtedness available to spend on future projects, if the board chooses to do that. Yeah, this next slide is the increases in incremental assessed value and the tax increment revenue, and surprisingly, they look exactly the same, just different numbers. So for the assessed value, back in 2002, we started at the base value, and all the way up through 2020, we have increased that assessed value by about $250 million. And then the revenue goes hand in hand with that. In 2002, the tax increment revenue was about $400,000, and in 2020, we were up to $3.9 million. So the district is doing what it's supposed to do, which is a very good thing. Lots of numbers thrown at you, but this is in your packet as well. This just shows what the impact has been on the different taxing districts while the urban renewal has been in effect. So the total impact that urban renewal, the taxes that it has levied, is 34 million. So that money has been spread out that other taxing districts did not receive. But once the urban renewal is closed and those properties go back to the districts, they will be seeing this money coming back into their coffers as well. If you have questions, stop me, okay? This is the one we're going to spend some time on. This is the cash flow projection, and it's been a while since I brought this to you. But this is a snapshot of what it would take to pay off our debt and be done with the district if we did not do any more major projects. I have it projected out that we could have all of our debt paid off by 25, 26. There are options, and this is something that we are looking for direction from the board, if that is what you, as a board, want to do, if you're working towards just paying it off and getting it closed down, if you still want to use some of the maximum indebtedness towards other future projects that might still be in the plan. I am working with a loan company that, we're exploring ideas of refinancing that debt, because interest rates are extremely low, and their original estimate that we could save over a five-year period would be about $3 million in interest costs. If we were to just refinance the debt that we have outstanding right now, consolidate it all into one loan. So we're there, the company's working on numbers for me. But another option would be to take the loan at a higher dollar amount, to pull all the maximum indebtedness out at once and hold on to it, and then it could be spent as the board chooses in the future, if they want, on other projects, or we could just use it to pay back the debt. It gives you a little bit of flexibility, because it'll be in our pockets, in our account to be used or not used, depending on what the board chooses. So we're going to bring back more information on that, but I just wanted to put that out there, let you know that we're, I'm working on that to, if nothing else, at least save us another $3 million in interest, because that just helps out all the taxpayers.
Julie?
Yes.
So if we don't use the 6.4 million, we're looking at 2026 as being able to scratch a final check and pay off the urban renewal district?
Yeah, in this chart, you can see for, I've got projections for this current fiscal year as well, and at the end... And at the end of this fiscal year, once we're done with the Quiet Zone and the Arch and those projects, we will actually have about $4.8 million left in maximum indebtedness. Very bottom line, it may be too small to see, but the very bottom line shows from year to year how much we would have left in maximum indebtedness.
Good, thank you.
Did I answer your question?
I think so. I think you answered it in that if, with, okay, so we've got $4.8 left, it's still looking at 2026. And so if we take the $4.8 million, either as you were describing as a part of the restructuring piece, or we decided to do remaining, potentially remaining projects, how further out would that push the payoff?
We, it would probably push it out another year, maybe two.
I think Counselor Parker was waving his finger there.
Julie, thank you. This is, each year, it gets more elaborate, and I appreciate the effort you went into on this. It's going to take a while to think about this and chew on this. But let me understand the numbers that we're looking at right here. This projection for ending the debt in '25, '26 is based upon the current rate that we have today.
Correct.
So we could refinance, this is kind of like a mortgage, we could refinance and take an extra $3 million. And if we save $3 million, we could still end 20, the district '25, '26, and have an extra $3 million to work with. Is that right?
I think it would probably extend it another year, possibly two, because there's going to be interest on that as well.
All right, somebody else.
If there aren't more questions, I'm going to do the very last slide. Sorry.
I was under the impression from this conversation that we had previously, in a previous year, that we had at least one bond or loan that could not be paid off early, period. Is that no longer the case?
That is not the case.
Remember that, okay.
We actually paid off this year already. We paid off the loan for the township in Sequoia and the Berg Parkway loan. We paid that off this year. So we only have three left.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Okay, so this is the final takeaway I want everybody to look at because this is really impressive. So the assessed value at 630 is about $309 million. Our frozen base was $66,000. So the increase in the assessed value has been $243 million. If we hadn't done nothing, and assuming it had stayed a blighted area, and we only received the maximum 3% increase per year, had the district not been formed, we would have only been, increased the value by $53 million. What that means is that about $190 million in our increased assessed value is due to the district existing and the development that has been done within the district and by the district. So this is really, to me, this is very impressive. This is what you want to see. This is a good, working, urban renewal district.
So Julie, if I'm looking at this, then if we hadn't done anything, we would only have been at $119?
Yes.
Million dollars.
Correct. In theory, I mean, a lot can happen, but if we'd only had our normal 3% increase, yes. Are there questions on that? Scott's going to come up and talk to you just a little bit more.
Thanks, Julie, thanks, Jamie.
Let's see, can we pull it? Commissioners, are you going to have any more questions on the slides before we drop those off here?
I don't think so. I think everybody got their questions out, so yeah, go ahead and.
Great. I want to thank Jamie and Julie for that excellent presentation. And this is just supposed to be a high-level overview for you, Commissioners, and it's just a general annual report. One thing I wanted to offer to you, and Julie touched on it a bit in her part of the presentation, which is, at some point, the agency will need, and that means you, the governing body of the agency, will need to make some decisions on what you want to do. Now, we have, we have a few years, but those years can sneak up quickly, and we need to plan towards that, and we need to make some decisions about paying off the debt and letting the district close, as is, if you stayed on the track that you're on right now, potentially doing some refinancing, which Julie talked about. And I think we really want to pursue that information and bring that back to you. There's, there's nothing, it costs us nothing to pursue that information to present to you. So we'll be doing that. And then, you know, essentially determining if you want to sunset the district or if you want to consider extending that timeline. My thought, because we're bumping into our next meeting soon, and this really wasn't intended to be a super-depth discussion, is I might suggest to you that you want to have a work session carved out for this, specifically an urban renewal agency work session, sometime in the coming, you know, maybe few months, maybe in the next, within six months or so at least. And I could work with Chair Barwigan when we want to set that up, and we might wait until we've got some additional information for you. But that's my recommendation for you is just, tonight was mostly informational, and then I do think you need to have some conversation around where we want to go, and so we can begin to implement your direction at some point.
Commissioner Parker?
Sean, I'd suggest going with the suggestion there of setting up a work session. But I'm also wondering if we can have consensus, or at least discussion, in the next two or three minutes here, on this idea. Julie talked about having up to $6 million or four something, between four and $6 million, available to invest in the community. I'd like to see if there's support on the commission to actually turn that inside out of having city staff work on a list of things that could be accomplished with that funds. If in fact, there's nothing to spend it on, then we don't even need to go into the discussion of whether we should use some of that bonding authority. As I remember, I don't think we can use that for Walnut, but there may be some parts of Walnut outside of Walnut we could use it for. But that would be my suggestion, Mr. Chair, is that part of the discussion isn't just a binary, do you want to delay the district by a year and have $6 million to invest? But instead, what, what approaching up to $6 million in investments within the authority of the urban renewal district could be made? I'd rather make this from a programmatic investment standpoint than a strictly budgetary standpoint.
Scott, does that sound like something feasible to do among staff in the next couple of months?
Yeah, we'd be happy to do that. In fact, yeah, I think that's a great suggestion. And I think that would tie nicely in with a work session conversation to bring that as well at the same time and have that full, comprehensive discussion around, around all of these topics, if that works for the commission.
It works for me. I don't, I can't speak for everybody, but, you know, I do think that's a great suggestion. Thank you, Commissioner Parker, for bringing that up. And I do think it gives us some stuff to chew on in a work session. So, yeah. Commissioner Tibbles, you have any question?
No, I just want to agree as well with Commissioner Parker. I think that when we put something, the options that are on the table, it makes it more meaningful. And I think more information and more informed decision-making is what we're all striving for. So I agree and appreciate that suggestion.
Very good. Vice Chair Hudson?
Well, if we're throwing out ideas, we brought up the topic of Walnut Street, and I know that there was, at one point, there was some amount of urban renewal land, not, we had basically like a slush fund, sorry, wrong phrase, a, in excess of urban renewal district land, not much, like an acre or two acres, that we, it was an excess that we could add on somewhere. And I think there was talk of trying to do that with the Walnut Extension piece. Another, as I'm looking at our packet on page 16, it lays out the blue area that is the urban renewal district. And Community Park is part of that urban renewal district. And I think at one point, or one time, the idea may have been floated out there of redoing Community Park and taking that stretch of land down there from the park and attaching it to what would be Walnut Street into the urban renewal district plan, therefore being able to use urban renewal funds to do what urban renewal funds were intended to do.
Good memory there, Brian. You're absolutely right. And I don't think we ever pushed it out to how many feet and inches, whether, whether we could get there. But it, it, you know, that is a technical question. And Scott, if you need some help on that, but I think Joe had been working on that as well. But that's good memory, thank you.
Okay, we'll take a look at, we'll add that to the list of items to take a look at and report back.
Very good. Any other questions for Scott before we finish the evening out here with this meeting?
No, it's always a good report, and it's always good to see how our investment is paid off with urban renewal.
All right, well, if nothing else besides that, I will take a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I guess so, moved.
Second.
All right.
Second.
Vice Chair Hudson, and seconded by Commissioner Banks to adjourn the urban renewal meeting. See you guys in a few minutes.
Well, all those in favor?
Oh, all those in favor, sorry.
Aye.
Unanimous, all right.
And.
Five minutes, right? Didn't we agree on a five-minute?
Five-minute break.
We're going to take a five-minute hiatus before we start the city council meeting. Good evening, Canby, and welcome to the, gosh, March third, two thousand and twenty-one, um, regular city council meeting. Uh, thank you for bearing with us. We had a, uh, early start tonight, and so we had to take a quick break in between, um, an executive session and urban renewal district meeting, and now our regular meetings. We had to take a quick break, uh, before we got started. Uh, we have a, well, I was gonna say, um, a light agenda for us, but I, I think, um, the parks conversation will be a lively one, uh, as well. But before I get going, um, I just would like to read, um, a quick statement, um, before we move into, uh, citizen input and community announcements. Um, uh, before we begin, Simon, I want to address a situation that had occurred over the weekend, uh, regarding a publication, um, dis- uh, distributed from our library. Uh, it was brought to my attention, and that of a couple other city councillors, that there was an advertisement publication that was being distributed by our library, uh, with book holds that library patrons would come to pick up. In that advert, advertisement, there was a book title and cover, uh, on what many felt was a very adult topic, and that many found, um, inappropriate and pu- pushing offensive. This publication that was distributed comes from a third-party company that the library, um, works with. This publication goes out to four thousand different libraries and bookstores across the country. For the past ten years, this publication was a gifted subscription to the library and is sent to us for distribution. Pre-COVID, our library staff would place this out on the information table for library patrons to pick up on their own and look through. With the pandemic, for the past year, the library has been closed. Most recently, we have been placing this publication in the bookbags when library patrons have come, have been coming to pick up their books. In the ten years that, that this is, uh, in the ten years of this partnership or this subscription, um, this has been the first complaint, um, or series of complaints based on this, um, subscription that staff is aware of. After this was brought to the attention of the city manager, he reached out to our library director, who made the decision to remove the remaining copies of the publication from being distributed in the bookbags effective immediately. Because we distributed this, it may have appeared that the Canby Library was either making or endorsing these reading recommendations that were suggested in the public. This was not our intent. Myself, our library director, and our city administrator apologize for this particular issue of this publication being distributed. The matter of ensuring that items we put out for community are appropriate for all has been thoroughly discussed with the library director. To avoid any confusion about that in the future, and since we don't control the content of the publication, staff has decided that the best practice going forward was to cancel our subscription and to not distribute this particular item. And we, we will also be reviewing our standards and procedures around these types of materials and how they will be properly vetted before being displayed or distributed in the future. Thank you for that. Um, next, we'll move into citizen and community announcements. Um, on the citizen input and that, uh, pieces, uh, first up, I have, uh, Mr. Kevin Starrett. Good evening, Mr. Starrett, how are you? You are muted, sir.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Members of the council, my name is Kevin Starrett, and I've lived in Canby for twenty-five years. I wanted to talk to you tonight about our library, which you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, and its promotion of a book titled Lick Like a Lesbian. I seriously considered reading some of the book to you tonight. I thought it might be good for our community to hear it. Our library promoted this book as, quote, "a fun but informative guide to perfecting oral sex" in a flyer titled "Great Books for Every Reader." Now, our library staff may consider this book appropriate for children, and members of the council and our city administrator may think it's appropriate to promote it, but I wonder how many residents of Canby do. I have no doubts that any opposition to the circulation and promotion of this book to children, but will be met with accusations of censorship. But why is it only censorship when conservatives have a problem with something? But when Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, YouTube, Google, and Amazon choose to silence opposing views, it's, quote, "maintaining our community standards." Library staff and anyone else are free to buy, rent, or steal books like this and provide them to their children. No one is preventing that. But to have this kind of thing actually promoted to our kids in a community resource is outrageous. No doubt, as you've already mentioned, the blame will be shifted. The library, its staff, and supporters will say they're not responsible. They didn't create the flyer. They had nothing to do with it. The book's not on our shelves. They didn't even read what they were handing out possibly to children. But that's like slipping kiddie porn in someone's shopping bag and defending yourself by saying, "I didn't take those pictures." Seriously, does handing out a flyer promoting Lick Like a Lesbian sound like an oversight to you? If the promotion of this, of this kind of book is allowed under our library policies, if no one's held accountable for the distribution of that promotion, and all we can expect in the future is that we'll pay some other company or allow some other company to create this kind of content, then Canby parents and grandparents can rest assured that they'll have the opportunity to explain this kind of thing to pre-teens and maybe even preschoolers in the future. The library staff answers to the city administrator. The city administrator answers to the city council. If no action's taken other than to mumble something about mistakes were made, then the city council has tacitly approved of this. It's really that simple. If we're required to accept anything that is promoted to our children, then we accept that we have no standards. In the progressive world, we're compelled to create an endless stream of safe spaces for the easily offended. But those who are offended by the promotion of pornography to children are on their own. You can choose to do nothing. That will be the easy way out. But I can quite assure you that that will not be the end of the problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Starrett. Um, next, I have an email that was submitted by, uh, Lois Brooks.
Uh, Mayor, if I could have a, a point of order here, uh, I've been informed that perhaps our YouTube, uh, channel has gone off the air, so if, um, the technical folks, uh, that are listening could double-check that.
Okay. We want to pause for a moment while we vet this or keep going. Okay. Um, so email from, um, Lois Brooks. So she's agreeing with a previous email that was attached to this, um, in response to the library director, um, about finding a decision to stop this subscription, a very poor one. First, before the pandemic, copies of the book page were placed in various places in the library, not just the circulation desk, but the information desk and the book garden. This was the situation for many years. Second, the friends regularly adjusted the number of copies we ordered based on consumer demand. When the library reopened for inside hold pick, holds pickups, we were told that the book page was a very popular, and we increased the subscription. Third, copies of the book page are available where you pick up holds, but I have always had to ask for it. It was never, it has never been placed into my holds bag. Now, that may be because I have too many holds, but the librarians net will never tell. Fourth, I do scan and/or read the book page every month and have done so for years. When I see books that interest me, then I read the description. When I picked up the March copy, I saw the review of the book in question and just proceeded to scan other books that might be of interest to me. Like the song says, "I know how to walk on by." Over the years, I have found few authors to try new, sorry, excuse me. Over the years, I have found new authors to try, new subjects to read, books for our granddaughters, and even new cookbooks to try. I enjoy being exposed to new and different ideas, but there are definitely a lot of books in the book page that are, also don't interest me, and I don't waste my time on them. Fifth, I don't understand how it is logical and expedient to cancel a subscription that many others in Canby enjoy without checking with those people first. Let me give you a personal example. I have absolutely no use for the horror genre. Now, before the Stephen King fans come and tar and feather me and ride me out town on rails, I also respect people's choice to read horror. These same people probably wouldn't approve of some of my reading choices either, and that's okay. There is room for both of us in our library. I am adult enough to simply skip over those books, both in the library and in the book page. Uh, in light of all this information, I would like to request that library director and city manager reconsider this decision. Respectfully, Lois Brooks. Uh, next on the list is Stephanie Carlson.
Thank you, Mayor Hudson. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Great, thank you. Mayor Hudson, city councillors, tonight I come before you representing myself, a private citizen of Canby, and not in any other capacity. A friend reached out to me a couple of days ago, mortified at what was found in her library bag. In the publication that was in her library bag, under the heading of "Great Books for Every Reader", she found a title of a book that disturbed her greatly. Directly under the book titled Candy Cane Lane Story was a book called Lick Like a Lesbian, the book in question tonight. Confused, I asked her if this was in the adult publication, and she said, "No, it was labeled under 'Great Books for Every Reader.'" To me, every reader means just that, every reader, eighty-year-olds as well as five- and six-year-olds. This book is not appropriate for five- and six-year-olds. After digging in and asking more questions, I was told it was an oversight, that this is a publication that the library has subscribed to for a long time, like we've already discussed tonight. Now, I don't know exactly who's in charge of overseeing what the library promotes to our community and kids, but someone is. And we can point fingers all day long, but someone needs to be held accountable for promoting this. I wonder what other books have been promoted by this publication and have snuck by the library management. We must protect our innocent and precious children. Just to let you know, all, uh, just to let all of you know exactly some of the verbiage that is contained in this book, I took the time from my very busy schedule to look over a few pages today. Uh, citizens of Canby, if you have children in the room, this would be a good time for them to walk out of the room. I'll be quoting various sections of the introduction of this book. And I quote in the opening, "Fly like a bird, swim like a fish," F expletive, "like a rabbit, and run like a horse." Not many of us are in the same league when it comes to keeping up with these natural specialists, try as we might. But what about lick like a lesbian? Again, it's a tall order, a stretch of the imagination, maybe, but if we're honest, who doesn't want to be able to do that? They say nobody does it better, possibly. Well, this pocket-sized tongue-in-cheek user guide on how to perfectly perform ten much-loved oral sex acts has been passionately put together by the wisecrack teams with you and your partner in mind. So while we may not be able to show you how to fly like a bird or swim like a fish and so on, we can indeed teach you how to lick like a lesbian." I could go on and on, but I will finish it out, uh, and I quote, "As you are nicely, as you are now nicely chilled and reading this and possibly a bit horny, we assume that you are also a bit curious as to how you can achieve that perfect oral experience. If the answer is yes, and we sure it is, then all you need to do is now follow the simple steps, diagrams, and tips herein that will guide you both and provide all you need to know for delivering and sharing the perfect oral orgasm. Even if you don't have a tongue like a giraffe or a pee expletive like a New York pastrami sandwich, there is no need to worry. We will show you how to get the best out of the stirring and stimulating form of lovemaking," end quote. Did I make anybody feel uncomfortable tonight? I know I felt very uncomfortable reading that. Is this appropriate for early readers, for all readers? No, it's not. And if any of you say it is, you're out of your mind. It's wrong to over-sexualize our children, period. Please, I urge you to keep your library management in line from here on out. It's their job to be seeing what they're promoting to the community. Thank you for canceling this subscription to said publication, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Carlson, appreciate it. Uh, next on the list, uh, Margaret Starrett.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Members of the council, my name is Margaret Starrett, and I'm a resident of Canby. I was very troubled to learn that our library was inserting flyers into books that people were picking up, promoting a book called Lick Like a Lesbian. It divides belief that the people who were including this, this in books that might very well be going to children had no idea what they were doing. If that is true, it's dangerously unprofessional, but I very much doubt that nobody at the library noticed what they were handing out at a public building supported by taxpayer dollars. My sons are grown men, and I no longer have to monitor what they see, but as a grandmother, I feel I should be able to make use of that facility, and I am required to pay for without having to fear that my granddaughter might be confronted with material that would be considered pornographic by the standards of most reasonable people. I believe it would be very, a very big mistake to pass this off as an innocent mistake and forget about it. It is my expectation that the city council takes steps to hold someone accountable for this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Starrett, I appreciate it. Uh, last that I have here is, uh, Mark or Dawn. It's on, it's on my list here. Ms. Deppner, you are ready to go.
Great. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Tonight, uh, I come to you solely for myself, and I'm not representing any other person but myself. So Mayor, um, Hudson, thank you for this opportunity to speak as well as all council, council members. I wanted to let you know what Merriam-Webster Dictionary defines as pornography. It's "the depiction of erotic behavior, as in pictures or writing, intended to cause sexual excitement." The American Pediatric Society says pornography, "exposure at young ages often results in symptoms of anxiety, depression. Children also report the feeling of disgust, shock, embarrassment, anger, fear, and sadness. Long-term effects show increases of addiction in children. As a parent of young kids, I want to know why a leaflet is being handed out to kids with the recommendation to read Lick Like a Lesbian. It's a fun and informative, informative guide to perfecting oral sex. It provides useful and informative techniques to help you along with your sex lives. Who approved this? What's being done about it?" And I hope our council takes this issue as serious as I take my children's and their exposure to pornography. The person responsible for this needs to resign, and oversight needs to happen. We need to stop shifting the blame, and as a community, say no more. Please make our library a safe place for all children. A library is supposed to be a safe place for community members and children to come and learn, not a place that garbage finds its way into the minds of our own children's heads. Why, I want to know why this wasn't proofread? Why is this just sitting on a counter? Five-year-olds cannot walk by, just walk on by and decide not to read it. I can walk on by and decide not to read it, because it's not something that I'm interested in, but a five- or a six-year-old can't. It's enticing children. It's pornography. It's wrong. I want this to stop shifting the blame and saying, hey, we had a responsibility as an employee of the city to say, no, this should not go on a counter so that young minds can look at it and encourage pornography. I'm really upset that this has been allowed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Deppner. I appreciate it. Melissa, are there any other people queued up at all? No? Okay. I appreciate everyone's comments on the matter. I'm sure that there will be some counselor comments here later on during that portion of our meeting. I will just say that in my conversations with the city manager about this particular topic, yes, this subscription that we get for this magazine, it's been a ten-year subscription. I do believe that, take it for what it's worth, I I believe it was one of those situations where there may or may not be a policy or procedure in place, and that's got to be corrected, absolutely. My understanding was talking with Mr. Archer and through our library director, that it is not uncommon for this particular publication to come in, get unwrapped and put out, because there hasn't been issues in the past that city staff or the library staff were aware of regarding this particular partnership and subscription. Please know that, obviously, what action our city manager will take or has taken, that is his purview as the city manager, and I think it was mentioned that our job as the council, we have three direct reports, the city manager, the city attorney, and the city judge. And so how those things are handled will that will be seen through by the council and/or Mr. Archer. So, again, thank you all that spoke, and again, and the email that came in. I'm sure there will probably be more that comes up. Mr. Archer, is there anything else on this matter right now?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just quickly, I would want to echo what you said, Mayor Hudson, which is that, yes, my responsibility is direction to staff and direction and leadership of our city services. So, at the end of the day, council, obviously, you get to provide me direction and direct my work, but I will always take accountability for our staff and our services. So, council, mayor and council, if you ever have any questions or concerns about that, of course, you can always direct me and have conversations with me, and I will not shy away from having conversations with you about things that are difficult. Mayor Hudson has already covered, and I don't want to reiterate everything, but essentially, just for your information, council, yes, I'm reviewing this matter. I did make the decision to, in consultation with our library director, to have this flyer, magazine flyer, stopped from being handed out. Once I became aware of this issue, I know some of you agree with that decision, and some of you, I think, disagree with that decision, and I think that might also be a sentiment in our community, and I know there are varying viewpoints on that. So, for better or worse, that's my decision, and I chose to make that. I know that that causes some concerns in different ways, but I thought it was the right thing to do in this case for now, and it also allows it allows me to examine our procedures and our policies at the library in terms of, you know, what we may want to do differently. And of course, this is, as with things like this, again, whatever your viewpoint is on this, it's a learning opportunity, and I will certainly take responsibility for working with our staff team on what may need to change and how we do things. But again, I do want to say for those comments that we receive about direction to staff, I will take responsibility for the city staff and council. You're, of course, welcome to direct me, how you choose to do so, but I will continue to review this matter. So that's, I think that's all I want to say at the moment, and of course, be happy to answer any of your questions as you may have other conversation around this. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Scott. I appreciate that. We'll move on in the agenda. The crux of tonight's meeting is a discussion regarding the Sorry. Just had to double-click on the agenda here. The discussion on the Parks Master Plan update and a project list conversation. So the reason that this is in the council meeting versus a work session was to give us plenty of time to be able to have a conversation around this. So we're going to take a moment. I know we've got Parks Board people laying in the wings. I think we're going to bring them into this conversation. Again, while they're doing that, the intent and purpose here is to, yeah, discuss parks. What's currently what's currently on deck, what we've been talking about for a number of years, and then looking at the the upcoming Parks Master Planning process. What will that look like? And then hopefully, maybe start to talk about ideas and things in terms of our parks in recreation twenty and thirty years down the road. So, again, I moved this into the council meeting because it gave us enough time to talk about it. I don't believe that going from six to seven would have given us enough time to talk about these projects, share ideas and things like that. And I know that our parks in recreation are of great interest to a number of people in the community. So that's why it's in the agenda as an agenda item tonight versus just a work session before the council. So, let's see. I see David Biscar, Terry Jones, Mr. Sassy, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Trubosser, Ms. Potter, oh, and the ever-illustrious Mr. Oliver. All right. And Chief Davis. Well, good evening, Parks Board. If at all possible, would love to see faces, if I could. I know the viewing audience at home would love to know who their park board is, so if you've got the ability to go on camera, that'd be great. You know, if you're worried about your messy room or office, I totally understand and can do that. All right. Well, excellent. Well, good evening, and thanks for joining us. I'm really going to just initially maybe turn it over to Scott. Did you want to kind of kick this off?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor, and so mayor and council, and also members of our Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, thank you all for attending the meeting tonight. I look forward to this discussion. I think it's something that we've needed to do for a while, and I'm glad we were able to put some time on an agenda where we have the opportunity to have a good conversation. Just, I guess I'll just give kind of a kickoff here, and then, Mayor, I'll let you, of course, guide the discussion how you'd like, and I'm sure that you'll want to hear from the board members, the Parks and Rec Board members. The reason, and I think you alluded to this, Mayor, but just to kind of reiterate, the reason we're having this conversation tonight is is just to have a general review on the status of our Parks and Recreation planning efforts and our current projects list, as well as discuss our future planning and our future projects, and how that all needs to be, how we need to work towards that. The first thing I want to mention is, we've got a couple of things here. And I think we'll probably hear from our Parks and Rec Board members on this as well, but we're trying to balance some different needs, and that is, first of all, is implementation of our current parks maintenance projects and our current needs while we develop our long-term planning, which is being done through our Parks Master Plan update. So the Parks Master Plan update, I want to touch on that just briefly here, is that will guide our long-term strategy. I know when I joined the city just a short few months ago, parks was one of the issues I heard about early and often, and I know it's a topic of great interest, and I know we have a lot of need, and we have we have great potential in our park system. We have we have a number of parks and trails and amenities, and I I know that we have things that our community desires to add to that system. And the question is, how do we add to that system? What are the priorities of the community? How do we fund those items? How do we keep up with the maintenance of what we currently have? And how do we maintain what we might add to the system in the future? The city, when I came on board, the city had already put in its budget, and so good work on the foresight of everybody involved in that decision, had already put in its budget the Parks Master Plan update. The last Parks Master Plan the city did was almost twenty years ago, and so we are quite a ways out of date. Not to suggest that there might still be some things in the current Parks Master Plan that might get carried forward, but really, obviously, the community has grown and changed, and I think the needs have probably shifted somewhat in those close to twenty years. And so it is important that you revisit your master plan in a relatively timely manner. So I think twenty years almost is probably well beyond that time. So I commend the city for having already made the decision and recognized that that needed to happen. When I got here and began my work, I did ask our staff in working with our Parks and Rec Board to move that master plan forward and to get that process moving, and that has happened. We have solicited requests for proposals. That time has closed, and we did receive four proposals from firms. And we will be in the process of working through a selection committee that will include representation from the Parks and Rec Board to determine who the consultant will be that will work with us on that process. So I'm excited that we're at the point of being able to move that ahead. I think that is a critical thing, because determining how we establish our priorities is difficult without some kind of a guiding document, and that's exactly what this master plan will be. And the master plan will be a comprehensive look at the whole city. It will be inclusive of lots of community, public input in different ways. We'll be working with citizens of Canby, we'll be working with stakeholder groups, organizations, for example, we would probably reach out to the school district, and you know, sports groups and other types of activity groups, and things along those lines. One thing that we did recognize early that I also encouraged our staff that are working on the master plan to do is to incorporate the Parks and Rec Board into the the process of how we steer the master plan. So the Parks and Rec Advisory Board is a group of already-appointed citizens who are interested in this topic, are active, and obviously very motivated to see some things happen. So we already have in place an excellent steering committee for the project, and so we did incorporate into the document, the RFP document, that the Parks and Rec Board would actually be the citizens' steering committee for this project. And what that means is it's the it's the committee that will hopefully represent the community and help staff and help the city steer this project, and there will be a lot of communication and sort of touching base, and basically, the Parks and Rec Board as the steering committee will help us kind of test out the different theories and recommendations that will be coming forward, and also to help us make sure that we're checking in with the right people and organizations in our city as we move forward. So that is in place, and the Parks and Rec Board will be very active and engaged in our master plan. So again, that's the longer-term look at how we set our priorities and how we look at our funding processes. In the shorter term, so back to the earlier comment about our list of existing priorities that are maintenance-related, so kind of renovations and maintenance types of projects. The staff and the Parks and Rec Board have already been working on that, and council, this this is where we wanted to also check in with you this evening on where we're at, what we're working on, and allow some dialogue between the council and the Parks and Rec Board. So back in August of 2020, our staff presented three options, at the request of the Parks and Rec Board, presented three options for maintenance and replacement projects to be done in the more near term, this current fiscal year, or possibly into next fiscal year. The Parks and Rec Board, and that list of projects was an attachment to your staff report, mayor, council, and Parks and Rec Board. And it's titled "Staff Report to the Parks Board, August 6, 2020", so I would refer you to that if you need to recall what we're talking about. But essentially, staff presented three options of various projects that we believed were doable and fundable within our current financial situation. And after some months or a few months of consideration, in December, the Parks and Rec Advisory Board landed on a recommendation to proceed with option number three. And again, that is listed in that supplemental item in your report. I will essentially, what that consists of, just a quick snapshot, is some work at South Locust Park, some work at Community Park, and specifically in the pond, and some park signage types of replacement work. So I know that will probably be a point of dialogue here with the Parks and Rec Board members, with you, council, but I just wanted to kind of set the table for that. But lastly, what I'll say is since the time that this recommendation came forward, our staff have been working on these projects, and we also did bring back to you at a recent meeting, council, a supplemental budget action that you approved, which does include us being able to accomplish some of the projects on this list and some of those things that we wanted to do. Since the time that that list was recommended by the Parks Board, we obviously had a massive storm event a few weeks ago that did wreak havoc on many of our city parks, and is diverting a lot of our staff time, a lot of our attention, and a lot of our resources, frankly, to the cleanup. Now, we are working on, in terms of the resource component, we are working in conjunction with our Clackamas County Emergency Management folks, the potential for some type of reimbursement of emergency funds, FEMA types of money that might come back in the form of some reimbursement, but that is not a but that is not a guarantee. We are hopeful that that might happen, but if it doesn't, then that will have an impact on, on some of our resources. So that's just something to keep in mind as we have this conversation. So, that's again, just kind of a quick overview of why we're here, what we're talking about and then I'll step back and let the dialogue happen. But the, I think the general direction that we were looking for on the staff side or an outcome that we were hoping for is, is to just check in with the Council, allow the Parks and Rec Advisory Board to have some dialogue with you about their thoughts and ideas and where we're at. And then just, just get a sense from the Council on if we're on the right track, if you have any other direction for us in terms of the projects and the processes that we're working on here. So, I'll, I'll close for now and be ready to answer any questions. I also want to acknowledge, we've got a number of other staff here this evening from our, our Parks team, our Parks management and, and our finance director to help us answer any questions that might come up. Thank you.
Great, thank you Scott, I appreciate it. At this point, I think we're all maybe very well versed in Zoom and it makes it hard when we all want to talk at the same time. So, I'm going to try to do my best and kind of moderate as I can, but if you guys would open up your, if you click on participants at the bottom of your screen, and it'll pop open on the right-hand side, if you want to make a comment or there's that raise hand function in the bottom right-hand corner, I will try to watch that as best I can. And if that's, you're not able to find it, I will wa, I will keep an eye out for waving hands in screens as best I can. Barry, where did Barry go? There he is, right in the middle of my screen. I saw you point there, that was pretty funny Barry. Barry, we want to take a moment and kind of give an update on kind of what Scott laid out there in terms of that, you know, our memo dated, you know, so option three with Locust Street Park and Community Park. You know, you and I met over the weekend to talk about some of this stuff and so, I know some of these ideas have kind of changed and evolved since this document was created, but I thought you had an opportunity to talk about that and then some of the other recommendations and things that Parks had been talking about.
Yeah, thank you, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Thank you Mayor, thank you Scott and thank you Council members for giving us this opportunity to, to address you folks. I mean, I want to, I want to start out by also thanking Jeff Snyder and Jerry Nelson for coming to all our meetings, you know, that we've had in the, in the last few months and they've been very helpful, very forthcoming, very, offering a lot of assistance and, you know, insight as to, you know, what we can and what we may be able to go forward with. Scott's pretty much covered, you know, a lot of the, a lot of the topics that I was. I know Mayor, I sent you an email with the attachment from February 29th, which was what we were working on for the last year, year and a half in regards to projects. Initially, we were focused primarily on Maple Street Park and Locust Street Park and you can see on that list of what we had going. And then, the discussion on the master plan came up and the need to do a master plan. As Scott said, it's been 20 years since one's been done and we, you know, we, we see the necessity, I guess, that, that this master plan needs to be done and so, we asked the city, we asked city staff, you know, we don't want to remain stagnant, we want to move forward with some projects, we want to get something done while this master plan is being worked on. It sounds like this master plan may take, you know, a good part of a year to get complete. And so, we didn't want to remain stagnant and so we asked them for some recommendations. And then you, you also should have the August 11th of 2020 list that city staff provided us. And as Scott, you know, said, we talked about some of the items and then we, we discussed that, you know, let's look at some of these items, you know, let's, let's go after the low-hanging fruit, you know, that we can complete this year. And so, we shifted gears from Maple Street a little bit and determined that Locust Street Park was a good option for us, that we could maybe complete that park in its entirety before the end of this year and turn something over to South Locust Street Park, the Bridging Cultures Community, a park that is very busy and talking with Jeff Snyder. In the summertime, that park is, is usually packed. So, we decided to focus our efforts on Locust Street Park and, you know, we've had some wins there. You know, we had some items like replace the playground equipment, replace the roof on the restroom in, in, at Locust Street Park. Both of those and, and put in the bark dust around the playground equipment. Those three items Park staff has been able to complete already. That, that's a win in our eyes, something that hasn't, you know, that, that we've been asking for and really is kind of been a slow process, but Park staff has done a great job in, in adhering to those and getting those complete. So, we've got a couple wins, but we've got a few, we got a little bit further to go to complete that park. We want to resurface the, resurface and strike the basketball court. We'd like to put in a pavilion or gazebo over the parking area or the concrete area there that will give the Bridging Cultures Group and the Hispanic community with, with power so they can, you know, have their festivals and enjoy that space, you know, in that area. I mean, if anybody's been by there, there are a ton of apartment complexes in there. So, a lot of kids, a lot of people and I think they'll really enjoy it. So, our focus is to complete Locust Street Park this year. The other item that went along with that was the pond at Community Park and initially we were asking for, you know, having a fountain put in there that would move some of that water. If you go there and in an aeration, you know, fountain or an aeration, it would move or it would give the, the pond an opportunity to not become so. In August, July, August, September, I mean, that pond is very stagnant, you've got a lot of growth on top, it looks, it looks terrible and it's one of the pictures on our, on the city's website of Locust Street Park at that pond. When it's clear and it's clean, it looks great, but when it's, there's an invasive plant that is growing in there and it, as the, as the heat of the summer arises, this, this species sprouts and covers the top of that pond. Well, Jeff Snyder and Jerry came up with, they talked to the people at Willamette Country Club and they got a recommendation, the, the people knew what that invasive species was and how to get rid of it. So we can put a granules into that system, you know, a couple times per year for the next two years and it will kill that invasive species and help keep that from creeping into the, the river there as well. So Locust Street was our main focus now, Community Park, getting the granules in the pond, going back to Maple Street Park, putting safety netting up to keep softballs and balls from flying into the, to the newly constructed splash pad there is another item that, that we need to do. And then the gravel area just to the, next to that, we need to do something that we were promised back when that splash pad went in. We took out a tennis court, tennis courts to put that splash pad in and we were promised that they would be replaced. Now, do we replace it? We still have a discussion to go on with our group, but replace it with a tennis court or replace it with pickleball courts. Pickleball courts have become very popular and it is a, a fast-growing outdoor activity that is a little less maybe, it might be enjoyed by more than, than the tennis crowd. So, I mean, it's a fast-growing sport, so we would like to look at, before the kids go to the splash pad and start throwing rocks at each other and, you know, doing, you know, it, it, stuff gets out of hand. We need to do something with that, that gravel area. In the meantime, you know, either we get the money or can come up with a funding to put in the tennis court or the pickleball courts or replace it with grass or something. And then the unfortunate happens, the ice storm hits and, you know, we got a lot of damage and we recognized the damage at Wake Park and we thought that, you know, we could maybe not put Wake Park on the, on the front berth, but this has brought it to the forefront actually. We need to do something with the disease, the damaged and the, and the dangerous trees that are in the area. We need to get an arborist in there and I believe I've talked to Jerry and Jeff and that's, that's already something that's in the works, but we need to get somebody in there to identify those trees that are a hazard to the community, you know, before we move on and we need to identify them, mark them, do whatever the arborist and our, our park staff says and, and take care of those. So anyways, that's just a quick overview, I guess, of the things that we've decided that we need to move forward on while the master plan is being worked on. And I can't emphasize enough, we have the, the RFPs back, we have four, we haven't opened them yet, that I, you know, as, as Ryan Potter stated, I believe we need to get that selection process going so that we can, we can get the master plan underway so that we don't drag this out too long. I mean, we, we are, I don't know, we're an aggressive group, we've got some great people on, on this council or on our board and, you know, we'd like to, we'd like to make some headway. A lot of things as far as parks go have, have gone by the wayside and we want to, we want to up our game a little bit. So, I will shut up at that point now. Barbara, you had your hand up, I think. Oh, sorry Mayor.
Yeah, I, I'll come back to Barbara here in a second. I've got Council Parker, Council Tibbles and then I'll come to Ms. Carmel.
Actually, I'll pass to Jordan, I want to hear what he has to say.
Okay.
I would actually want to hear what Ms. Carmel says first, so I'll pass again and then we will go reverse order.
All right, so we'll go Barbara Carmel, Jordan Tibbles and then Council Parker. Barbara, you're, you're still muted.
There we go, can you get me out? Yeah. And so instead, Gary's done a good job of describing projects, but I want to talk a little about the context in which this, this board works and where we try to serve both the needs of this community and prepare recommendations to the city manager and the city council about what kind of projects ought to have and what kinds of priorities. And that's a really important function, but we stumble a lot, no, we don't stumble, we endlessly debate various points of view about various kinds of projects and the projects rate or everything from the huge whatever's going to do about rehab about Wake Park, here I made a little list, Wake Park and down to a neighborhood, a little neighborhood park and a big inexpensive sports field and then back to something that's relatively small like Locust Park, et cetera. And so, that, that broad range of activities are hard to compare and they're triply hard to compare because we don't have any clear and, and defined understanding of the fund sources. And so what I want to talk about is, we're getting better and better at working on the funds uses side of this, what we spend money on and what the priorities are and Gary has described some for now and we are waiting, now we're in a waiting period for, for most of the big projects until after the master plan is completed. But I think we have work to do in understanding fund sources. We do have one session hopefully scheduled on the subject of SDC funds and what are the rules and what are the regulations. But what I'd like to have more is, well, I'm a businesswoman and so what we call it is a dashboard, a more summarized understanding of where our monies come from, where our funds for our budget come from, how are the rates, how do they relate to the budget itself? What are the rules about the funds? How are they allocated? When do, in what time period do we have access to them? And those are all sort of squishy and unknown and makes the business of comparing one priority to another priority when, when there may be hundreds of thousands of dollars differences in the, in the cost thereof. So, my plea is for, for initiative and help with staff in particular to understand, to help us understand where we get our funds and importantly, what rules cover what we can and cannot do, instead of falling into the, the assumption that we, we can do something but we can't. The best example of course is that Wayside Park is not yet well-defined about what it is, it's outside the urban growth boundary on territorial. And so, we have a really hard, hard time when the master plan is done. If, we're going to need to know what is allowed to be done outside the urban growth boundary in terms of improvements. So, with all the mystery on the fund source side, I speak as a businesswoman, that makes it really hard to make recommendations, let alone your decisions. So, so my pitch today is to put some real effort into both Council and city, city manager, put some real effort into getting a better summarized clarity about fund sources and uses. So that's what I have to say and it has nothing to do with which park or, or what timetable. So, thank you.
Thanks Barbara. Mr. Tibbles.
Thank you, Ms. Carmel. I, I, being one of the newest members, cannot answer any of those questions for you because there are wiser people on the board that will know.
We can't either.
But no, I just want to first start off and say I really appreciate, I haven't met most of you, so it's nice to meet you over Zoom as was been the theme for the past year, but I know that these projects, looking over them are very thought out and very thorough and I, and I appreciate that. My input would be, I kind of look at all these projects and I say they're important to our community for different reasons, but one that resonates I think the most and probably, I hope I get some agreement here, is I see one as a safety issue and I see others as a prioritization with the Wake Park situation. And so, I look at if Wake Park is a, oh, if Wake Park is a, is a higher priority already on our list, but then we look at the fact that some, we can plan for what would have been the order of which we do things, but then something like an ice storm comes along and plans can, need can be altered. And I think when you look at the project that I ran on the Wake Park was, the, the need and the, of the tree removal and the, the middling of the park needs to be addressed as well. It seems like most projects are most cost-effective if you are in there already and that is a necessity to really dive into what the values of doing those improvements would be while we're already in there for a matter of necessity. So, I, I look forward to exploring, that is an urgent matter, but also the ancillary benefits of anything that was coupled with the tree removal. How many of those trees that are damaged from the storm are also the ones that would have been removed for the improvement that we were discussing before this all, or that was outlined before this all happened? I'd be really interested to know that and while I agree with the validity of each project, that just to me, when I took my daughter, who's two and a half, there the other day and walking around and just seeing, what we don't know is how further the trees that have split are going to deteriorate, it just seems like that is the utmost concern because It just seems like that is the utmost concern because it if if we don't address it and something else, something happens, I I it would be really, really hard to, you know, go to the community without making that a top priority. So that was that was my input.
May I make a quick comment about that?
Of of course. Well, Mayor, that's Mayor's call, but yes.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I I just think this is a really good example. This is a, you're absolutely right. I'm I'm guessing everybody that's here tonight is is hoping we can get get our arms around what to do with with Wade Park. But it is a hugely expensive job. If Jeff were here, he would be explaining how root bound the whole property is and you can't plant anything. So this is an example of, we have no idea how to deal with the, how how can we get funded with, we got a master planning, we've got other priorities, et cetera. That's the thing that makes our committee work so hard. So now Barry wants to talk.
You're muted, Barry, if you were gonna follow up on that.
Are Jeff and Jerry in the room and are they able to speak to this?
Yes, yeah, Jeff. Jeff Snyder and Jerry Nelson are both here. Yeah, they can.
I believe Jeff and Jerry have both um um they've addressed that. I believe they have an arborist coming into Wade Park. I let them, let them uh, I let them address that if they can speak. I believe they they have an answer to that Wade Park issue.
Yeah. Mayor, would you like uh the staff to address that now before you go to the next?
Absolutely.
One of you wanna talk to that? Come on, you can come on up. So Jeff Snyder, our Parks Manager, is coming up and he'll uh he'll help you answer that question.
Mayor, Council, Parks and Rec Board, good evening.
Hi, Jeff. Hey, Jeff.
Good evening.
A specific question. We have an arborist, I believe you were wondering. I believe it's um next Monday on the eighth, I'm gonna spend a couple hours with an arborist out there just to assess the trees at this point. Just to see um, you know, what we're gonna have, what we're in for, so to speak. Yep. Any other questions?
Well, I I wanted to add on to that. I I think from the description, there was talking about a lack of turf in the middle and uh needs to be addressed. Um, and long term fixes. Do any of these projects coincide with what the operations would be to remove the trees? Like, are are we able to double down on efforts of once the park is down to do these? Um, like from a labor perspective or anything that we could, while we're there? Knock that part of the project out as well?
I'm not sure at this point if it wouldn't be so so much more of like a design type. We need to decide, number one, what we want to do there. You know, as far as what what kind of playgrounds, what kind of infrastructure? And then once we decide that, we need to see what trees could be left. And um it's just kind of an unknown at this point, what we need to do. Um, I I believe, you know, when we were speaking of the root bound, you'd be if we were to go to redo that area and get turf to grow, we're gonna dig it down to you know, probably eighteen inches just to get that in there and get some good soil back in there. So.
Jeff, can I tag on to your, I I think that, you know, what we want to make that a safe from a tree standpoint right now, and then I think the master plan is gonna dictate what we do beyond that.
Right.
Okay, and I is that, would you agree with that, Jeff?
Yeah, I I agree that there would need to be a whole, like I said, a whole design concept of where we want to go with that park. At least half of it, that back half.
Council Parker?
Well, let me make an argument for the city council uh to go to thirty thousand feet. My suggestion is, especially given the granularity of understanding that this committee has and our staff and um, our new administrator, his parks background. For me, I'd like to have the city council stay out of this. Um, of turn this over to the Parks Committee um, and have them drive it. Uh, Scott already talked about having them drive the RFP. But I would, I would like to see them drive this whole show of and if you want to come to the council and say once a year, here's our priorities and here is what we're doing. Do we need to fine tune our direction? But otherwise, I'd like us to just, as a council, stay as a policy board. And 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 I just wrote these three things down. They can be added or subtracted, but here's the direction I'd like to give the Parks Committee. Um, work on underserved populations. Two, work on mobility impaired populations. And three, build a design that is attenuated to our changing age demographics. Now, go do it. But I think when when the council tries to get into the granularity of 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 which park, what trees, that sort of thing, we've got too many other things to do. That we've got a a dedicated, sharp committee that's willing to do that. I think now we have the correct alignment with staff that we can do those sort of things. And um, I think this whole park process on the master plan, running a concurrent, what can we do now? And watching our maintenance budget, because under the Hensley rule, we don't build new parks unless we can maintain them. And and one of the things that I want to empower this committee to do is to keep on that maintenance thing. When I voted to put an additional five dollars on everybody's uh, utility bills, it wasn't so that we had a pretty cemetery. But with the uh information we got last year, twenty-five percent of that is being spent on the cemetery. I'd like this board to keep on top of that, to figure out and make recommendations for maintenance, make recommendations on where to build our new parks. And if we need to write the checks, fine, but otherwise, I think we should stay out of it. That's my vote.
Thank you, Council Parker. Council Warwick?
Yeah, thank you so much. Um, yeah, I I sort of agree with uh Council Parker there. And the one thing that I do want to add, though, is I think right now the priority has to be Wade Park with those trees. Uh, I, you know, we don't know the cost of what it's gonna be, but I know the cost if we don't do those trees and a branch falls or a tree falls on someone or something, it's gonna be a whole lot more expensive. Um, and so I think that's priority number one is making sure those trees are safe and um not going to come down. So uh, I almost don't care what the cost is to do that, as long as those trees are safe. Let's get them safe.
Council Spoon and then Council Bangs.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I agree with much of what Councilor Parker said. Um, my one concern he kind of touched on is uh budgetary and really uh related to the budgetary concerns, which are um, seeing if Scott and or Julie, I know I sent an email several weeks ago as we head into budget season of potentially uh reconfiguring our park maintenance budget so we get cemetery out of there and allocate it elsewhere where it's more appropriate, but also um, the use of park maintenance funds to maintain public but non-park spaces. And if we are able to do that during budget season, how that would change, because I'm looking at this as as you know, what we can do in fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, but is there a chance that we would free up more resources by uh reallocating those park maintenance funds in a more appropriate manner to free up some additional money for actual parks? And if so, would we then be able to maybe accomplish a little bit more? Beyond that, I I agree with Councilor Parker that this is, you know, we're getting in the weeds of something that I'd like to empower our citizen committees to do um, as much of as possible. And I'd love to be a part of the general vision, but in terms of what exactly we accomplish when I I think that's exactly why the citizen committee exists and and I'm I'm happy to to trust them with some of that decision making. Um, but but I would also love to see us free up some of that money that my personal opinion is, is not appropriately allocated currently in our budget. And uh, maybe Scott can speak to whether or not there's a move towards doing that this year.
I can, Mayor, can I address, do you want me to address that?
Yes, please.
Okay, great. Yeah, thank you for that uh question, Council Spoon. Actually, that's a a good clarification and and also kind of tags on to Councilor Parker's uh comment as well about the cemetery. So um just to be clear, what our 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 cemetery is operated and maintained within our Parks Division. Uh, so it's, you know, our our staff is is sort of a shared resource there. But um, the funding, um, we pay for our cemetery funding, excuse me, we pay for our cemetery operation maintenance out of uh out of our city's general fund. Um, and and we also use the fees that we collect for, you know, our burials and our internments and and those fees that come in. Uh, we actually don't use our Parks Maintenance Fee on the cemetery. It's it's parsed up in a way that that we're we're careful not to mix that money into that. But it is, it is a it is a bit confusing because it's it's all within our our Parks Maintenance Team who operate the cemetery as, you know, kind of a a joint um, division of of maintenance effort. But but as far as the actual budget, we don't put our Parks Maintenance Fee into the cemetery as.
Can I ask a clarifying question? Because I understand that the fee's not there, but with certain things like if if a department uses HR, we then charge that department for the amount of HR they used. We don't do, do we or do we not do that when Public Works and Parks is used to maintain the cemetery? Is that time not charged back to the general fund?
I'm gonna um actually, Finance Director Julie Blums is here. That's why, that's why she's in the room, because I was pretty sure we were gonna need to have her answer some questions.
I just want to make sure we understand what numbers we're potentially working with for the fiscal year.
Okay, so this is a little complicated because we we have a Parks Department and we, they actually split their time up into several different areas. Um, only the time that they're spending in our actual parks is charged to the Parks Budget. So when their staff works in the cemetery, their time is actually charged to the cemetery's budget, is not charged to Parks, ever. If they work at the transit center and they're doing the maintenance, the landscaping maintenance there, they're charging the transit budget directly. So we don't co-mingle. It's the same bodies doing the work, but where they're working is where they actually charge their time.
Thank you. That clears up some questions I've had, and it looks like Councilor Parker might have a follow up question, but I appreciate that, Julie.
You're muted, Council Parker.
I stand corrected uh that it it is not the uh funds. It it is the hours that a quarter of the available hours in the Parks Department is used for the cemetery. So if we could find another way of staffing that, then we would free up by twenty-five percent things that could be done in city parks.
When, I will say, when when the Parks Department took over the cemetery duties, they also got the staff from the other departments that were maintaining it before. So we moved those bodies into the Parks Department to compensate for that when they did take over the cemetery. And it all kind of happened at the same time we put the Parks Fee in place.
Well, maybe this is something that I should follow my own advice and let the Parks Committee follow up on.
Thank you.
It 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 all happened at the same time, so I understand why it's confusing. But it really makes sense. They do like duties. We don't want to have mowers in streets and mowers in cemetery and mowers in parks. We consolidated it so that we could consolidate equipment and efficiencies. Um, but trust me, they are very careful about charging their time to where they're working. Jeff keeps very close track of that. Does that help?
Council Bangs, you've been patiently waiting.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am, I actually had a question for Jeff while he was there and that was a couple of people ago, and so it's it's been a while now.
It's okay. He he's running back up there.
While he is uh working his way back. Um, I I will say um that, you know, I've only been here for a couple of months, but I think I speak on behalf of the entire council, thanking the Parks Committee for its work. Um, I um philosophically agree with Councilor Parker's um empowerment suggestion of the committee. I think that that's a better governance model than uh micromanagement by the city council. So in any event, um, thank you very much. And while you're here, I have something that's completely unrelated I'd like you all to consider. I think the community park needs to be named something different. I told Mayor Hodson this a couple of months ago. I didn't have a name in mind. Um, Bangs Park, you know, it really satisfies my ego, but I think you can all agree it's a really rotten name for a park. Um, Canby Pond Park is uh the best thing I can come up with. In any event, people don't always know what we're talking about when we talk about the community park and Wade Park, which is the gem of our city, is often mistaken for the community park because it's such a community asset. So I I'd like to see some kind of different name. I don't even care what it is. It's something that's distinct for that park. Um, but my question for Jeff was, we we got this arborist coming in on Monday. Do we have the same problem down in this unnamed Cam- Community Park? Um, the 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 Canby Pond area has been closed. I haven't been down there. Um, I think the tree damage must be spectacular there. I certainly know the trees, the cottonwoods are enormous. Same issue there and will we be looking at those trees as well?
Um, right now, we're just gonna use the arborist at Wade Park. But yes, everything's kind of blowed up everywhere.
Okay, that that is what I was wondering about. Um, do we, do we suspect that there may be dangerous trees at the community park as well?
That's, that's why we've been keeping it closed at this point, just for the fact, because that's like one of the only parks that I can control access to. So we have road closed signs up there. Um, so now we're going around trying to get all the widow makers and all the hazards we can out of all the parks. Um, people were still going in even, you know, when we had hazards. So now we're trying to address, prioritize the hazards and we're going for it, taking care of them.
Thank you.
Barry?
I have two things.
Yeah.
Um, the first is, I have to agree with Greg Parker in the in the hours that are are spent. I I realize that, you know, the the parks may get reimbursed uh money from the various departments that they're working on on their budget. But again, it's the hours that are lost that fall into the deferred maintenance category that our maintenance staff always falls back in. You can't you can make up the pay, but you can't make up the hours. And so then they get behind in other areas. So we're basically time wise, we're robbing Pete, robbing from Peter to pay Paul, you know, so to speak. Hours wise, they'll get paid and they're reimbursed that money, but they are losing out on the hours. You know, one other thing is the, that I wanted to talk about is the Parks and Rec Maintenance Fee that went into effect in January of twenty eighteen. And it's the five dollar Parks and Rec Maintenance Fee that, you know, the citizens pay for. As I understand it, that generates about thirty-six thousand dollars a month, which equates to like four hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars annual. And that equates to over the three year period about one, almost one point three million dollars in Parks and Rec Maintenance Fee. Now, I I'm not really concerned about, you know, what happened in the past. But in the future, can we uh, can we track the Parks and Rec Maintenance Fee expenditures both in going and out? Can we get a report that shows us what that money is being used for? And how much is coming in? I think it would be since, you know, the we established that Parks and Rec Maintenance Fee and then the city council voted to put it in place. I think we'd like to track that. It's like a checking account. What, where is that money going, you know, and what are, what are we paying for? And what's left in the, and what's left in the pot? And maybe in Sarah's point, maybe we can use that and to improve some of our parks. I don't know. Just a question. And I think it's, I I mean, it's something that we are asking for, and I see Julie maybe is here to address that.
I am. Um, okay, so uh, I may get a little bit. I am. Okay, so I may get a little down in the weeds here. I apologize. When the parks maintenance fee was put in place, the ordinance said that we were to take what our base general fund budget was from the year before and do a CPI increase each year. And that was the amount that the general fund was allocating to parks. And then we added on the maintenance fee. And that was the parks budget. So we did that. We added two staff. And then we started doing maintenance projects, doing safety replacement projects. So the way we track it is, I take that general fund contribution every year, add on the parks maintenance fees and any other miscellaneous little fees we might get, and then we subtract the expenses from it, and the balance rolls forward to the next year, and that's the parks maintenance fee reserve. Coming into this current fiscal year, that reserve is $175,000. So it's, in order for, if, if you want Jeff's crew to track their time against the maintenance fee, it's going to be very difficult because when they're out working on a park, they're gonna have to differentiate, this is just normal work, and this piece is maintenance work, and have to code their timesheets in a million different ways, which they already have to do, just to keep everything separate into the different funds. So it'd be very difficult. I'm not saying we can't do it. I'm just saying it would be an administrative nightmare for Jeff and, quite frankly, my payroll person. But we do track this very closely every year. We've got our allocation. I raise the general fund contribution each year by the CPI index that we use, or CPU index. The one thing we didn't do was last year, we did not increase the fee because we were in the middle of COVID, and we felt that, we didn't do any fee changes last year, actually. So when we come forward with our fee increase this year, I am incorporating last year's increase with this year's increase. When we bring that forward in a, in a couple months to kind of get us caught up. But we have, basically, as of the end of this fiscal year, we only have a year and a half left on this fee before decisions need to be made, whether we're going to extend it, change it, whatever we want to do with that. Does that help clarify that a little?
It does a, yeah, I mean, it, it does a little. I, I, I guess I, you know, I, coming, well, yeah, coming from my, I guess, my background, we were always able to kind of track the, you know, the expenditures going, you know, in and out. And I, I would think that it would be, I think it would behoove us to be able to track how that parks, I, I understand, when we put it in place, it was to increase the, the number of staff that we had, you know, it was, they were understaffed, and we needed to, you know, we needed to get them more help. It's also, you know, meant to purchase, you know, new equipment and, and things like that for, for the job. I, I don't see, I don't know about, you know, as far as hours, how they're spending. And I mean, I'm, I'm looking at, you're buying equipment, you're, you're, you're increasing your manpower, you know, things like that. I, I would think that we'd be able to track, you know, that fee as, you know, as, as we do a, and, and it's, it might be very, you know, it's not the quite, quite the way to put it, but like a checking account, so to speak, you know? You're adding money into the account. Now you're taking money out. It's going into these things. What are they? You know, what are they? We just, to me, I think we'd, we'd like to be able to see how that's, how that's, where we stand as far as what's in. And I, I mean, you've already, you just told us that. But with that money coming in and being added every month, you know, you know, how that's accrued and where we stand. I don't know, just my, just my.
I do understand. I will say, we use the general fund contribution first to pay for everybody. And so we, the parks maintenance fee is our last use of funds in that department. The, the issue becomes, let me give an example. So if they're at Wake Park, and they're mowing, and somebody's cleaning graffiti off of the building, it's very difficult to say, okay, the person mowing, that's just normal general fund money. But the person doing the graffiti removal, that's parks maintenance money. It, it's, that differentiation, that line is so gray, that, that is why we use that general fund money first and always leave the parks fee as last and keep that money left in that reserve. We try to be as conservative as we can.
Yeah. Okay. I mean, it was just, just, just a question.
So since the, uh, the topic of the park maintenance fee was brought up, and we are looking at that a year and a half from now, that is one of those, you know, policy decisions that, you know, the council has to look at, going back to, you know, Counselor Parker's point of, you know, where, where do things lie and should do what? That still needs to be input from the park advisory board on, you know, what, what that looks like. So, you know.
We have built that, I'm sorry, Mayor. We've built that into the master plan process to review the rate, the fee as well. And in the whole process of looking at new construction of parks versus maintenance of our current parks, the contractor will look at both pieces and, and come back to us and tell us what we need in different funding sources to be able to pay for all of that. So that, that is a component of that review process.
Great. I think I saw Counselor Banks, you had popped your hand up there.
Yeah, I'm just not sure I followed this correctly. In the first place, I, I think I agree with, with Barry. I, I don't know how you can evaluate what the fee should be if we don't have a very good accounting of how, how the money is being spent currently. And just the, the clarif- question, the clarification I wanted from Julie is, did I hear you correctly? We're rolling over $170,000 from this park budget?
From last year into this current year, yes.
Is that normal or is that abnormal?
It was $200,000 the year before.
Wouldn't that like pay for a couple, two, three, or four more maintenance workers?
Yes, but along with, yes, along with more bodies, you have to buy more equipment. We only have so many trucks. So it's, it's that balance of, it's not just adding a staff person, it's adding the equipment that they are gonna need to use as well.
Regardless, it seems to me that the people who pay those fees aren't getting a lot of benefit if we're just keeping it in the bank. Like, that's certainly not why anyone's paying that fee.
Well, Julie, just to jump in on that, that piece of it, that, the challenge with that aspect of it is that the, because of the park maintenance fee, that has a sunset to it. That's not permanent. So do you, you know, we beef up and add personnel, then that fee, if the council decides, no, we're not renewing it, or B, we're gonna go out to the voters, and the voters vote it down, then we're laying off, you know, people from those positions, because now there's no funding for those positions. So for me, even looking at that money, is that, is that for some of those projects that we just were talking about not too long ago, that we can be working on in conjunction with the master planning process? Benny and Maple Street Park, or, you know, those kinds of things? That, I mean, Julie, is that, I mean, really, that's what those funds are for?
Yes, and that's what we've been using it for. Last year, the big projects were the resurfacing of the safety surface at Legacy Park and repairing a bunch of pavers at the park as well. So that was Jeff's big kind of capital, I want to say, type project last year. This year, it was replacing the play equipment at Locust Park. So we try to pick a, a big ticket project to, to do each year that's on the safety list, as well as just the regular maintenance that's going on.
Counselor Tibbles and Counselor Spoon.
Yeah, so I would just, I mean, I guess throw a question, and then I'll have a little bit of follow-up on it, and turn it back to Barry or anyone who wants to chime in. I, I actually agree with Counselor Parker's approach to this in terms of empowerment. But I, I would ask, do you feel with the information that you're receiving on that, and are we giving you the tools to be empowered to make those decisions? Essentially, if you don't have the visibility of what the funds that are left over, like, when are you realizing that there is $170,000 that we're carrying over to the next year? And then how proactively could we address that money that would be carried over, that you could say, well, I have a project that we really want to take on, and we need that funds? When does that become a reality for your knowledge and your team to plan around in that decision-making process? Because it seems like if we're gonna empower the decision-making, not give every tool involved any, it's kind of one hand behind, tied behind your back, so to speak. And so it starts from, what at a very minimum do you need? Maybe there's some things that are really, really hard to get granular, and I recognize that I don't know the accounting side of that. And, and I took it in college, and I didn't, it was an enjoyable topic. So I totally respect the team's work on that. But what is it at a minimum that you guys need, whether it be a range, whether, what's the, what's the variable that would allow you to be empowered to make those decisions?
Well, I, I do believe that, you know, that we can make those decisions as, as a group. We have some, you know, strong people that are very well-versed in what's going on. But we also work very closely with Jeff and Jerry. And I know Jeff and Jerry, you know, are in discussions with Julie. And so, you know, we're, we are given advice of what direction we might be able to go from, from the parks staff. And, you know, and certainly this master plan is going to open up some, some avenues for us to make improvements and going forward. We've got, and Julie, you're gonna have to maybe correct me, in our, as far as SDC funds go, that we are needing this master plan to tell us what we can do and with what money. We're sitting at about $4.5 million as far as SDC money goes, and we're unsure of how we can use it. And so this master plan is going to identify for us what part of that money we can use on what projects that we feel we need going forward. So there's a lot of communication that's gonna come out, or a lot of decisions that will come out of this, this master plan. I, I feel we're empowered. I don't know. I mean, if anybody else in our group doesn't feel that, that we can make those decisions of what is needed, I mean, speak up. But I personally feel we're empowered enough. I certainly would, you know, would really like to know how much that Parks and Rec maintenance fee is available from quarter to quarter. If we knew quarterly what's sat in that, that, that pot, that would be, that would be beneficial. But also, we have to rely on our parks staff to, to let us know what project we can tackle and what one we can't. Right now, we know the, the five areas that we want to, to tackle right now. And we just need your, your support and commitment from the, from the council moving forward on those items.
I, I think from a, Barry, you're, you're absolutely correct. I know, I, no need to correct you. You are right on. I think what staff is kind of looking for, the process in the past has been that the advisory board comes to council, says, here's what we, our priorities are, how we would like to do this. And then council directs staff and says, yes, that's our priorities too. We're gonna approve the budget in, in May, go forth, do good. That was what precipitated from a staff perspective, having this joint meeting is so that you guys kind of all talk and hopefully be on the same page, so that when we move into the budget, and we put our budget together based on what the parks board priorities are, that you already know that's what it is, and so that that's not gonna be a big issue when we get to budget deliberations in May.
So we would have, we would need to have those documented by May. We would have to come up with what?
We need it documented by next week.
But we've pretty much given you those as far as, right now, right? Our top five, yes.
Counselor Spoon and Counselor Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a question that maybe is something we should completely address another day. But nonetheless, one of the things I'm hearing in terms of the things that are tying the committee's hands and council's hands, is that we have, we assess this fee. It gives us, and the whole point of the fee, however many years ago it was, three years ago, was to give the city, the Parks Committee, and our citizens a little bit more freedom in terms of what we can do with parks, and hopefully open up a future where we can add additional parks to the system. But because it has a sunset, we aren't really fully liberated to use that money because there's an end date to it, right? So one of the things previously, prior to last election, was if we had made a decision prior to the one and a half year sunset, we'd be tying the hands of a future council. But since it sunsets within the terms of the current council, is there any chance we could just revisit what happens with that fund after the one and a half years early, so that we don't have this limbo period where there's money that no one feels like they can use because it might potentially end in a year and a half? Like, is the ordinance preclude us from addressing that early, since we have the current council that would be addressing it in one and a half years anyway, so that we can kind of tie up that loose end, and either free up the money for the Parks Committee and for the city and for Public Works and Parks, or know for a fact that it's gonna be going away in a year and a half?
Yeah, I mean, that's exactly.
Yeah, I'm gonna let Joe answer that one.
Yeah, no, that's fine. Um, no, you're not precluded because you are the, the lawmakers, so you can remake it how you want. Or you can just simply remove that sunset if you really want. Or, you know, if I'm trying to take stock of what I heard the mayor say, if you're waiting to offer it to the population, it's expensive to have a special election, so you might wait till the next general one in order to save some money that way.
It's, it's, it's no secret that I've always been a fan of just tying it to the sunset of the urban renewal district, when our general fund grows exponentially. And that way, it's not in perpetuity, but it, it fills the gap. But at any rate, I would just say that maybe it's worth us considering addressing that, so that we don't have another year and a half of, we have funds, we aren't really sure exactly how we should use them, we're not able to use them the way we want to. It seems like a waste of the fee to not have the liberty to use the money in the way that is the best use of the money, just because there's this arbitrary sunset clause. So that's just my thought. Maybe we can address it earlier rather than later.
Yeah, and, and I know, just because I've been here historically, and I'm sitting in the back of the room kind of listening, one of the things to answer Barry's question that I was thinking about is, in the legal world, right, we have billable hours, and they can be a mess. And, and I think that's what Julie was saying, she wouldn't propose people to have to fill out their timesheets in increments of like, you know, one tenth of an hour or whatever. But I, I know in talks with Jeff Snyder, that he usually sees one body as somebody who, who does about 1,750 hours per year, if I remember that number, after vacations are taken out and sick time. So if you had two full-time bodies, you're getting 3,500 more maintenance hours per year out of them. I don't know if that helps answer the question about specifics, but it does tell you what value you're getting when you've hired two new people with this. And then it sounds like there's particular capital projects where they bring in temporaries. I mean, there's strategies about how to hire a crew. I mean, there's strategies about how to hire accrue of temporaries when the sun comes out and they can get a lot done quickly if you guys do wrap your mind around something you want to be doing too. So there's other strategies, but from a legal standpoint, if you want to remove the sunset, that's super easy. If you want to put it up to the electors to decide, then my suggestion would be save a little money and wait for a general election.
Thanks, Joe. Thanks, Sarah.
Oh, sorry, related to that, but if the sunset is in a year and a half, wouldn't we then functionally have about six, five or six months if we wait till the general election where we aren't accruing the funds?
Yeah, I mean, if, it depends on how you want to politically go forward. And that's a policy question.
Counselor Parker, then Barbara Carmel.
Well, I think back to when I voted to approve this fee. And it never occurred to me that after two and a half years into it, that I would be rolling over a quarter of what was assessed against my constituents because I didn't want to lay off people in two years, which seems to be the argument that I'm hearing. There are limited duration positions, there's a number of ways. Scott, figure that out. That just is silly that we are assessing a fee against people and they are not realizing the benefits of that fee. So we need to figure that out. In terms of the hours and that sort of thing, I'm sympathetic with our finance department. I've faced this as well, where you have a fund where the money is blended. It's not a matter of keeping track of the hours, it's the fact that you have blended two types of funds. And being able to re-segregate them is a difficult type of thing. So I'd like our committee to work on some recommendations for approaching this. I'd like them to stay on it. Because I'm going to have a hard time selling the idea of renewing the fee if people say, well, you didn't even spend what you approved. So Scott, figure that part out for us.
And just, and sort of in defense of this too, I think one of the reasons the council, at the time, signed up for that, and I don't necessarily need to speak for you guys, but I'm just trying to remind, is that there was such a backlog of maintenance. And I think first, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it was like 18 months of backlogged time. So it feels like we, you know, didn't spend the money on anything new because we were too busy trying to fill in the hole that we had dug for ourselves. So that's just my kind of historical picture of how I think the first year and a half of the maintenance fee got spent, frankly. It was on bodies and some big projects. But I would like to see you guys be able to proactively pick something and, like you say, create a story that your constituents can go, thank you for actually doing that, showing leadership.
Barbara?
Yeah, well, I'm thinking about Greg Parker's comment a while ago about going up to 30,000 feet and talking about empowerment. And by the way, I totally agree with Counselor Parker's concept that empowering this committee to make decisions and move forward with its activities rather than being in the weeds. But I point out, by the way, metaphorically, we are the weeds, we do weeds. But what I think is that the concept of empowering the committee to have more discretion, and it's been very useful for me because I've never, I've been on this committee for almost two years and I have never understood what is our, what does council allow us to do? What can, what do we have the discretion to do? So that's very encouraging. Now, all that said, I want to ask if there can be some sort of, among all of the people on this website and all of the people that are involved in the financial and the service parts of our organization, let's find some creative ways to empower the committee, not only to take charge of the recommendations and the decisions that they make for a better park world for this town, but how can you empower us financially? Because this whole conversation in the last 15 minutes has been about one little thing, which is the maintenance, the maintenance fee. And I know that's really important and I know it's ripe with political consequences. But I think there may be some ways for the committee to have a little more discretion and a little more empowerment in how we use the available funds, subject to the legal rules that we have to abide by, like the urban growth boundary. So if we can have creative ideas about how the finance department and Scott Archer can find to give us some discretion about giving us some money and let us decide how to match that with the priorities that you want us to take responsibility for. So I think that's all an important way to rethink the future of this committee, which I'm very excited, I'm getting more and more excited about serving on this committee because it's getting more and more challenge and opportunity to do important things. And before I use my last comment, I want to also say that if you really want your hearts to sing, wait another week or two till the fence comes down. But you all should drive by the rehab Locust Park. It is so beautiful and it is in a community, a little community, a sub-community that needs that space for children. It's the most heavily used park we've got. And that community is so heartwarming to see all the windows and all of the 1970s housing in a place for these children, which they are just going to, they're going to be so thrilled with the resurfaced basketball court and the equipment that's there and how pretty it looks. And I remember the first time I saw it, I think Jeff took me on a tour and I said, that's the most rundown looking place I ever saw. Now it's beautiful. And you would find it to be heartwarming to just drive by it and know this is what a park can be. And it's in the perfect place to be our star of a little thing for a huge benefit. So that's my, that's my happy thought for the day.
Thank you, Barbara, I appreciate that. Yeah, that park is really coming along very nicely. We've got, according to Cupertino here, we got almost pushing up against nine o'clock. I'm sure we can keep after this. Are there any other thoughts here to close out? I know that, you know, Ryan, you've been on this committee for, you know, probably a decade or more. Two decades, okay? And Scott, I know you've been in and out of various park activities and sports and things like that. Thoughts on any of the discussion this evening or things that haven't been discussed? Which I think are probably many, but at least.
For me, just a couple of quick things. One is the maintenance fee, which I think we've kind of beaten down tonight. But since I was the pitch man for this to the council two years ago, whenever that was, the pitch was, or the director from the Parks Board was that this was a fee for backlog maintenance. And I think you can go back to the CT5 video and quote me, it says, this is not a green light to start turning over shovels for new parks. Because that was our whole issue was, we had all this backlog maintenance that wasn't getting done. Everybody wanted new parks, but we didn't have, we had to find that happy medium of, sure, we could go build it, but then who's going to maintain it? Because we have all this other stuff on the other side that we weren't taking care of already. So that's kind of some of the history, which I think is maybe missed or maybe there's a lot of talk tonight, so it kind of got, you know, I kind of faded in and out, if you will. But that was the intent of that. And so I heard a lot of things about they're buying, you know, new stuff and what have you. But I don't think that was the true intent of that. So maybe that's general fund money that's buying the new equipment and the maintenance fee is actually going back to the backlog maintenance on that. So that's my two cents on that part. And then, you know, going forward, I think I'm really excited about the master plan project. I was on the last one back in 1964, when we, 2000, whatever, 20 years ago. Whenever we did that. And, you know, that's about the time we kind of pulled that off and we had all these plans. And I believe that's the time where kind of the healthcare and the purse stuff hit and the city kind of got bled out a little bit. And then we had our 2009 and all that stuff. And so it kind of was a financial disaster one after another. And so we have this 20 years where really we did not much. I think if you go back and look what, you know, what we created from 2004 to now, there's not a whole lot of things on the park board resume of true, here's how we improved it. There are a couple, but there's not a whole lot of things going on. And it's exciting now that hopefully we can, we can move forward. I know Barry used the number 4.5 million in the pot. And I would be careful using that term because now it looks like we have all this money to go out and spend. But obviously, that's got to be spent wisely and kept up with maintenance, right? I mean, there's two things, there's your SED money and then there's your maintenance money. And you got to make sure that we keep Jeff in the loop on that stuff. So that's kind of my thanks. And then finally, I guess, my last one would be, we call ourselves the Park and Recreation Board, but really we're a parks board. We don't do a ton of recreation. Those council members who may not know me, my passion is in youth sports game. I come from a family of that. And we don't do, as a city, we do, I'm going to say next to nothing in that department. And so I would really like to see, moving forward, somehow the council, somehow we do, some way to support our youth. I know Canby Kids organization, they have 1,100, I believe it's 1,100 kids that they serve. And currently, the city, you know, we really don't do anything to support those. Those are all run by Canby Kids and those individual sports are out there doing all that. So I'd like to see, try to work on, trying to help fund, help out that organization, maybe other organizations as well, I just don't want to leave everybody out. But I'm in the Canby Kids game and so that's where I'm coming from. But trying to figure out how we can help them, especially in these times where they haven't had any money coming in, that they're struggling, to try to maybe help them administratively continue. Because that's been a, since the 60s, that's really been our recreation tool in this community. And so I'd really like to see the city get back and try to, you know, I'm not asking for them to fund the whole thing, but really try to help and kind of get back into that game a little bit and just kind of help them out. So with that, I'm going to be quiet and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Sassy.
Thanks, Ryan. Scott?
Yeah, I agree. I, I'd like to see, this is for Julie, she doesn't have to come up, but I'd like to see with that Parks Maintenance, some of that money. Maybe, you know, the city used to give a check to Canby Kids. I'd like to see if we can give them another, you know, maybe get back to a $5,000 check for them every year. This goes to Counselor Bangs, how about Community River Park? Would that satisfy your curiosity? It is by the river, so if you've seen half the people down there, now you know why it's not very popular. I don't ever see the park fee going away. I remember when we brought up the street fee, did that have to go out for a vote? And that never went away, correct? So I don't see, I don't see our fee going away. It's $5. I think it's money well spent if we can get, maybe get that going a little bit better. I'd like to see with some of that, Jeff, another Parks worker being brought in. We're bringing all these homes to the city. Police department gets bigger, fire department gets bigger. I know they're on different budgets, but there's no reason why we can't hire another Parks and Rec guy and we can hire another Public Works guy. I think Jerry and Jeff both need one more guy, at least. And then my final thing is, this is just since we're talking about money, Wait Park. Now's the time to do it. I mean, the ice storm was a curse and a blessing. I mean, if we're going to do it, if we wouldn't have the damage and we decided to do something, we'd have people chaining themselves to the trees, I know it. I mean, they were devastated when we took down the bad ones on First Avenue. These are 10 times worse. And as far as money, I'd like to know if, maybe this is a question for down the road when we get going, can we use any urban renewal money for Wait Park? That's all I have, thank you.
Great, thank you, Scott. Barry, I'm going to give you the final word here on this and we're going to then move into other city business. You want to close us out on this conversation? You're muted, sir.
I want to thank everybody, you know, you and Scott and the councilors for sitting in and letting us air grievances or whatever. But I appreciate it, but I really don't have anything else to say or to add. Thank you again and thanks for listening to us. And thanks for giving us the support and the direction that we need. And I'm sure we'll be coming back to you with more recommendations. So I appreciate it and thanks.
No, thank you, Barry. And the Parks Board, I appreciate you being here on a Wednesday night until nine. I really do appreciate it and appreciate the input. And I know a number of you will be noodling this for the next week. And I'm sure Barry's next agenda will be chock full of pieces from this to talk about and start batting around. So I appreciate everybody's hard work on this, so thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I just?
Yes, sir.
I also just wanted to thank everybody for the robust discussion. It really, from the staff perspective and myself, speaking for myself as, I think I can still say I'm fairly new, a little over three months. I don't know when you get to stop saying that, but this has been really helpful. I know this has been a discussion that has probably needed to happen for some time. And I really appreciate all the input and feedback from the council and the committee members. Just kind of hearing it in this format is, I think, really healthy for us. And, you know, we've got some things we can look at and work on. All the feedback is being received constructively and positively. We'll take a look at some things. Jeff and Jerry, I know, have really been trying to work extra hard to, you know, help formulate what the Parks and Rec Board wants to do and how we can help you get there on behalf of the city. So that's our objective and we'll continue to do that. I'll ask our staff to continue to work with you, Parks and Rec Committee members. And again, the Parks Master Plan, I know it's been said, but I'm going to just say it one more time. That is going to be an incredibly valuable tool for the Parks Board, for the City Council, for staff, for the whole city in guiding what we do. Some of these discussions about how we fund things and what we do with the funds that we have or potentially funds that we don't have right now. It will give us clear guidance and priorities. And so we'll continue to press that project ahead and we look forward to the outcome of that. And then lastly, I want to say, I appreciate what Ryan said about the recreation element. It is the Parks and Recreation Board and you're speaking my language. I have a strong passion for this subject. And I do think, I think I just wanted to take the opportunity to piggyback on that just a little bit while it got brought up and plant the seed with all of the decision makers in the Zoom room here. I would love to see the city do more in the recreation realm. I think our community and the Parks Master Plan will help guide that discussion. And so that'll be a part of it as well. But I think our city, not just the city organization, but the city as in our community, can do more. I think we need, I think we need to take a look at that element of things as well. So I really appreciate that comment that you made, Ryan, about that. So again, I just wanted to thank everyone and I want to thank our staff for the hard work. You've acknowledged that tonight and you've seen some of the staff here. But I also want to acknowledge Ryan Potter, our senior planner, who has been efforting the master plan project and has been putting a lot of work into that. So he's been very helpful as well. So that's all I've got, thank you.
Great, great, appreciate it, thank you, everyone. We're going to move into the next piece of our agenda, which is mayor's business. So Parks, if you're, you're welcome to stay on or call it a day. So thank you. Appreciate you all. So on mayor business front, just letting everyone know, so Clackamas County Corning Committee is tomorrow. So I have nothing to report on that. R1 Act, I don't believe we're meeting this month, so it'll be April before that piece.
R1 Act, I don't believe we're meeting this month, so it'll be April before that piece. The vehicle registration fee conversation was had at the Board of County Commissioners on, they did a work session on Tuesday and the concepts or the ideas were floated by the Chair of the County Commissioners, T. Smith, to do, I think, one of two things. Scott, if I'm wrong, was to go out and do, put the VRF to the voters to continue it or for the Board of County Commissioners to outright repeal it. And, and so neither one of those options that were pitched gained any traction. So for now, it sounds like the vehicle registration fee piece will stay in place. And that conversation's been tabled indefinitely as far as I know it to be. Did I leave anything out on that, Scott?
That's a, I think that's a great summary.
Okay. This Saturday is our retreat for the council. There's, I know there's been some back and forth about live and in person versus Zoom. We've had a shift in the governor's level of risk for COVID in Clackamas County. And I had a great conversation today with the facilitator, who, you know, again, her, her opinion is live is better, there's better dialogue and, and what we're considering in terms of a group, in terms of trying to lay out some thoughts and plans like we did this evening and trying to get work done for the city. Is that our best bet to be able to do that? Which I, don't get me wrong, I like seeing everyone on Zoom, but I would prefer to be able to see you all live and have dialogue. I know during some of that conversation with facilitator, it, there seemed to be, you know, an okay piece to go live. I know that, not, I know that we've had some, some dialogue as well about only being able to go with Zoom with that piece. So I don't want to postpone it. I don't want to not have it right now. That I think is unfair to our facilitator because we canceled on her last year. And to postpone it, I think just delays us doing important work that we need to get done for the city. So I just, I'm going to ask, ask the group about Saturday and how we want to proceed because I want to make sure we, we, we stay, stay on task for Saturday. So, Councilor Hensley?
Yeah, I, I believe that we are more effective if we're live. I think that we should meet live. We definitely have the ability to meet safely in the facility that we have. We could have one person at each table, if, and tables six feet apart. And you can mask up or whatever if you wish, but at six feet apart, each person at their own table is completely safe. I've met with every one of these councilors just across a table in a restaurant recently. So I feel that we can safely meet and be more effective live.
Well, masks, masks would be a requirement because that's, I still believe that that's the case unless you're eating and drinking inside. So I think that that's the piece there. Other thoughts and input? Councilor Spoon, yes, please.
I think I communicated with you via email regarding in person that my preference is to wait until everyone who chooses or would like to get vaccinated has the option to do so, along with their second shot. Many of us are either in at-risk categories or have loved ones that are at risk. And we're so close to the end of us. All of us are eligible for our vaccines no later than May 1st. As elected officials, it seems kind of silly and reckless to decide, you know, a month and a half before we can all get vaccinated if we choose to, that now's the time to go in person. So I think that we've been effective in Zoom. I think that there are benefits to doing it both ways. But my preference would be to not, to not meet in person until everyone who would like to get vaccinated has the option to.
So can we, can, and again, that's the piece too, I really emphasized with the facilitator, just the dialogue around this piece. And so then my, my question to facilitator was, you know, how, how effective i- i- can this be? And she just did the city of Forest Grove where they did an all-day Zoom piece. And it was highly effective and they had a really great work session and council retreat in that regard. So it can be done. Again, I just, you know, I've got six counselors, six distinct personalities and six opinions that, you know, I want to make sure are heard and spoken and, and heard from. So, Councilor Parker?
Well, as I recall, we haven't had a lot of guests, although I think we have had department heads join us. But this is a public meeting, so if people want to show up, that could complicate the spacing. Also, I do like having staff there. I think it, it helps for them to hear us talk. So that, that kind of puts a wild card into it on, we have so many square feet that we can use, but we don't know how many people are going to be in that room. The second reason I'm, I'm disinclined is just as an employer, of, of being in charge of an employee, employees, and I'm not comfortable putting them to some degree of risk. So I would be disinclined to do that. We're, we're only a few months away from having enough vaccinations for everybody. In the next round, I think it's actually elected officials and city officials. So I think this group's going to get there sooner than later. So if you don't want to delay it, I would feel more comfortable with us doing it virtually.
Okay, Councilor Varway, then Councilor Tibbles?
I'm just still flabbergasted with modern technology, the way that it is, we can't do a hybrid of the two. It, it seems like, and I've, I've seen other cities doing that with their city council meetings of, of letting some be live and some are, are not. So I, I'm just flabbergasted that we can't come up with some sort of hybrid to say, those who want to meet in person can meet in person and those who want to meet via Zoom can meet via Zoom. It's, I'll bring my laptop. We could have a couple of computers up if we need to. But I, I'll do whatever is the decision is, whether it's in person, on Zoom, whatever. I think that it's important to honor our commitment to the facilitator after pushing her out from last year. I would love to meet in person though. And that's, I think that we are going to be doing 50% of what we would be doing if we were in person, you know, if we do it all by Zoom. I, that last meeting that we just had with the Parks Board was fantastic. It was incredible. There was some great stuff. But that was an hour and a half on Zoom and several people I could tell were kind of in and out. So I think if we spend an entire day staring at a computer screen, I don't know that that's great. So I, I'll do whatever, but I'd rather be in person. And I would love to see if we could come up with a hybrid for, for those who don't want to meet in person. I completely respect that, if they don't want to meet in person, but I would like to be in person.
All right. Thank you, Sean. I appreciate your flexibility. Jordan?
I just had a couple clarifying questions. From my understanding, where we would gather would be able to far exceed what the social distancing requirements would be. Am I correct in that assessment?
Yeah, we would probably be using the-
Double the distance.
Yeah, we'd probably be using the Willamette Room at the library where that room is considerably bigger.
And also, from my understanding, the school board is meeting with the personnel live. Is that correct? Not necessarily to open people, but maybe, maybe Chris can answer this for me. Are the, the school board and the staff involved in the school board meeting live?
The school board just started meeting live. No one's invited to attend the meeting. But, you know, probably there are some staff and I don't know because I'm not attending those meetings. But the, the school board did just start meeting in person.
Okay. My preference is to meet in person. I think given the, that we were able to go above and beyond, that realistically, we've all gone out to restaurants and sat together in a much shorter distance and felt safe to do that. I would like a, a clarifying point to, is, is the standard of meeting again in person for those who wish to get vaccinated, the opportunity to do so? I, I thought there was mixed messages between Councilor Spoon and Councilor Parker on that. So I just wanted to kind of get an understanding of if that's, is that the standard for when we will, will meet? When we all are vaccinated or?
No, that was just in email. That's what I told the mayor was my preference when he was asking our temperature on meeting in person.
Yeah, individually though, it's not, because I, I will volunteer right now. I'm not getting vaccinated. So I'm just, I want to make sure that that's the, that's not the standard for when we can eventually operate.
And that's why I said anyone who chooses to get vaccinated would have the option. I, I don't expect that everyone would make that choice personally.
So, yes, Councilor Bangs?
So I, I agree with you, Mayor Hodson, that Zoom meetings are, are not as good, not as effective. I don't want to meet on Zoom. That said, I won't be meeting in person on Saturday. Like, I just can't do it. My second vaccine is Wednesday. So I'm, I'm too close to screw it up now. And I do have risk factors. And so like, I, I can't do that. I like Sean's idea of the hybrid thing. Like, I don't want to prevent this from happening. I think it will be more effective in person. It would just be reckless of me at this point. It is true, I've met with all of you in person except for Mayor Hodson and Sean. And it's only because Sean and I had, one of us had to cancel the meeting. So my message here is inconsistent and illogical, but I'm five days away from getting my second vaccine. I'm not going to screw that up now. I just can't do that to my family. But I'd be perfectly happy if all of the rest of you guys want to meet and I'll be on Zoom. I mean, it's not a great way to go. It really isn't. All of this stuff is not a great way to go. It's not a very good way to teach. It's not a very good way to shop. I'm still baffled by the whole toilet paper shortage. We're making all this stuff up as we go and it's just not as good. So I propose we have a mediocre retreat or postpone the retreat until all seven of us are comfortable and bringing our staff in and meeting in person.
Okay. Thanks, Chris. I appreciate your honesty on that. Thank you. And that, and that was my, you, you were very frank with me in your, in your email about it and I didn't, that's not, I, I don't, I don't believe in excluding anyone from this dialogue and the retreat. That, that's not the point. The point is getting all of us together and setting a direction and start fleshing out some objectives and goals, not just for us as a council, but for the city as a whole and our city manager who needs to have a direction and who we need to evaluate, you know, from a performance standpoint. And so right now he's kind of ad hoc based on whatever we're throwing at him. I know that he would love some direction from us on, on some things. And so no way do I believe that we should exclude anyone from being able to attend. So, so thanks, Chris. I appreciate it. Scott, you had, you were waving your hand there a second ago.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a clarification. So the, the facilitator has a strong preference. Her recommendation is either way is fine and she's prepared to facilitate in person or on Zoom. But her preference was not to do a split for this, for this goal setting or a hybrid, if you will, where some are in the room and some are in, in the Zoom. She, she explained that and I, I can't probably iterate it as well as she did, but it really had to do with the feeling of just, just how, how the communication would flow and, and, you know, how, how things would work. And from her experience, she's got a good amount of experience doing this with, with boards and committees and so forth and councils. So I just wanted to throw that in that, you know, from a staff perspective, we'll, we'll work with you to, to do whatever you ask us to do. And we, we can make it work to do the hybrid. I mean, you see us, some of the staff are here and you all are on Zoom. It just, for the, specifically for the retreat, the facilitator was, was really, I mean, she had a very strong preference that it was either one way or the other. And she was hoping that that's what the outcome would be and she'd be happy to do it either way. But so just, I just share that with you. But at the end of the day, you know, I'm sure she'll, she'll work with us on whatever we decide to do. But that was, that was her recommendation.
Okay. Thanks, Scott. Jordan?
What, sorry if we already went over, what does the postponement option look like? The time that that would look, because I think we have at least a consensus in terms of a majority that it's more effective to be in person, all things equal. Now, all things aren't equal, so I, I recognize that. But I think that, correct me if I'm wrong, but what does that postponement look like? Is that month? Is that two months? Is that, what is, anything you could fill in on that piece?
I, I can fill in because I did ask that question. If we did postpone, what would that look like? And so to, you know, the news that Councilor Spoon had shared with me, you know, I'm just now too, about elected officials and whatnot, being able to start getting vaccinated in, in May, that's when we can start signing up. But depending on what shot vaccination is available, they will be using, also dictates time in between a first and a second vaccination shot. So depending, you know, how quickly that can go, it could be June before we have those that want to get vaccinated, get their vaccinations. So, and I know that she did say that she is already booked out into April and the first part of May. So we would be looking at probably sometime in, in, you know, in June or July to be trying to do our council retreat. Councilor Varway?
Yeah, thinking about June or July, that, I understand we want to get this done. But if, if we're going to be a more effective, if we're all together in person and B, we have two new counselors who are still kind of getting the hang of counseling, maybe June isn't such a bad idea for postponing until June. Just a thought.
And, you know, in all honesty, Councilor Varway, I've been doing this now 10 years and I'm still learning how to counsel. So, you know, I don't, I don't know when that officially, you stopped learning that piece though. And that's fine. Again, you, I, if, if we feel that our best, our best work is going to be done together in the same room, you know, shooting glances at each other and having back and forth conversation and hopefully, you know, you know, some, some laughing and whatnot in getting the city's work done, then I, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with postponing and working with the facilitator to do that. I did joke with her that, I, I asked her if there was a cancellation fee for the second time. And she said, well, no, but if it happens again, then you might need to find a new facilitator. So, you know, I just want to make sure if that's the route we want to go, I, I'm totally fine with it. I just want to do the best work that we can do for Cambie and for each other and for staff. So is that, I mean, is that the vibe I'm, I'm sensing is then let's postpone until we can all be, you know, within earshot of each other? I saw Councilor Parker nod his head in that way. Okay. All right. Consensus says that we'll, we'll move it out. And we'll, we'll talk with the facilitator tomorrow, Scott, and, or by, yeah, tomorrow and go hand in hand and ask her not to charge us the $25,000 cancellation fee.
We will, yes, Mayor, staff will, will follow up with her. And she was willing to, to postpone it so long as we committed to, you know, having her still do the work for us. But we'll work with you on that, or we'll work with her on that and, and figure out the scheduling.
Okay. Perfect. Councilor Spoon?
Yeah, if we already have commitments in June and July, would it be helpful if we- Yeah, if we already have commitments in June and July, would it be helpful if we emailed those to you and Scott tonight so that we don't delay scheduling that any more than necessary?
Absolutely, that would be super helpful. And that's, that was a big part of our conversation, too, when we're looking at this going. We start moving into the the summer vacation season, so um, that becomes whether that's a staycation or or what that might be. So um, yes, so if we start looking at calendars, that would be good. Okay, I appreciate it. Um, my last little bit of piece here, you guys, is that uh um, council, our staff, and that's staff being Scott and Melissa, and I think working with Gordon are trying to figure out um getting back into council chambers um when the time is right. Um, and so um, we're looking at uh potentially even after you know, the vaccine window opens up and we're able to be in person. There will still be the social distancing pieces and whatnot that we'll have to probably follow. Um, I'm just, I'm I'm just guessing that that's going to be the case. So Scott and Melissa and uh Gordon are all looking at technological pieces from, you know, spacing and uh I know Joe was looking at layouts as well, but what is that going to mean in terms of additional or different microphones to be able to pick up uh everybody that's spread out in the room, et cetera? So staff is already starting to work on that piece already. Um, and also looking at um the uh the library as well, and what is that going to look like? Or how how does that look moving forward and getting um that return to some sense of normalcy as well? Scott?
Yes, um, in fact, we're um, we're having another uh meeting with our our leadership staff team tomorrow trying to um put put plans in place for, you know, basically reopening to the public. And so, yes, um, we uh, this is not an absolute, but just to just so we could have a target um, at at least in terms of opening our facilities or to uh to some extent. Um, April 1st is the date that we were uh looking at. And again, Mayor, you said that, well, there still are a number of restrictions in place um even with doing that. But yeah, it would be, that would be uh the library, um, our city hall civic offices. Um, and actually, our um police station and uh municipal court also are still doing things without public uh coming in, so that would be part of that as well. So we're working on a game plan. We'll actually be reporting that back to you, council. Um, earlier this week, I had a um, there's a monthly um all city managers meeting for the county um, Clackamas County City Managers, and this was the topic of discussion as to what what cities are doing or not doing, how they're, are their councils meeting in person yet? Or when are they going to? And and I will tell you that the range was was wide in in terms of what what cities are thinking of. But uh, it the the council meetings um seem to be the thing with the seem to be the topic with the most range, and some were even talking about not having in person until uh late summer or fall. Uh, but some were trying to ramp that up now, and so some were in between. But the one thing that did seem to hit um uh consistently was almost every city was talking about having um their at least a limited capacity opening to the public, maybe on a on a staggered basis or limited hours with their city halls and their libraries and, you know, a- any other public facility. So I think our April 1 uh goal is is um kind of in the right in the right frame. But uh, there will be a lot of parameters around that, how that looks exactly, but we'll be working on that and reporting back to you at a at a meeting here the next, um, well, that at our next meeting, actually. Uh, that's our last meeting in March.
Great, thank you. Yes, Chris.
So so I was just going to recommend, Scott, maybe this is just my limited um um the experience in life. I'm a high school teacher, so I I tend to be juvenile, but April Fool's Day seems like an unlikely time to reopen, perhaps the 2nd of April or March 31st, just recommending that. But uh, maybe that's not a big deal in the real world.
Yeah, somewhere around that date, but yes, that might that might be uh, that might be something to think about. We don't want it to seem like it's a joke, that's for sure.
Uh, Counselor Banks, has there been a few um April Fool's Day jokes played on you as a teacher?
I was a vicious um victim last year. I uh found this bone once in the desert, and I gave it to a biology teacher. And then I started getting letters from Portland State Department of Anthropology and Archaeology, all of which was a vicious lie. Um, I'm still bitter about it.
Always good creativity, for sure. All right, um, moving to council comments and liaison reports. Uh, Counselor Tibbles, you're up first.
So I have no liaison reports at this time, but I think um I would like to make some comments on the issue that we discussed earlier uh with the citizen input. Um, this, to me, was a a really big deal. Um, I remember when I moved here and when my wife and I did our first walk uh downtown Cambie as residents. And I saw um little two little girls riding their bike to the library and picking something up and leaving. And I just think about uh our responsibility as a city of um what is handed out to children. We should not take lightly. Now, there were other individuals that that was handed out to. And I I recognize that there is a policy that has been in place for a very long time. And you kind of get an autopilot zone, and I'm sure is a new um, as a new library director, the top priority is probably not going to every flyer that is sitting around and reviewing. Uh, that was a poor policy to have things out without eyes on them way before who is in charge now. Um, and it it was poor then, it's poor now, and it needs to be addressed. Um, I think having that be the only solution um is not showing the citizens of Cambie the seriousness that it deserves. I think when you, there was a conscious decision made that is a new procedure to hand that out indiscriminately to anyone. That was new. And for that, the thought to not review and look what you are handing out to anyone is unacceptable, and it's frankly poor leadership to say that it that that's okay and that procedure is fine and not take ownership. And I know that Scott has taken ownership of his staff in that regards, but there was a conscious decision made to not look at that. Um, I'm never going to be okay with that because the innocence of children is something we should all care very, very deeply about, and that was inappropriate. And I would want a decision to be made that reflects the seriousness that we take that as a city. So that that is my input on it. I look forward to the policies and procedures that will fix this from ever happening again. Uh, I commend the decision to discontinue the publication and um looking forward to others' comments on the issue.
Thank you, uh, Counselor Tibbles. Appreciate it. Um, next around the clock here is uh Counselor Banks.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a report here regarding the Cambie School District in particular. Um, and I'm just going to be reading it, so it looks like I'm paying attention to you, but I'm not really. Um, let's see, the biggest news going on right now is the superintendent announced this morning he will be retiring at the end of his contract uh June 30th. And um, many of us are going to miss him. Um, you know, I've had my disagreements with the superintendent in the past, um, and um I've never once doubted his focus, dedication to children in our community and their education. Uh, you know, he's a good man. Um, you know, all the superintendents I've worked under are good people, but I think I'm going to miss this one more than the others. Um, so that's probably the big news. I don't know. Maybe the bigger news is that uh children have started back in school this week. You may have noticed the school buses um prowling around towns again. Um, in-person instruction right now includes just the K3 kids. I believe the four through six kids come online next week, I guess offline is what I should say. Um, and then full real in-person instruction is not um, but really, it's not going to take place this school year at all. Um, because we have this um, the the COVID requirements, but April 1st, all grades are going to be back in school uh in this rotating schedule. Um, there's been a lot of community flak directed to the school district uh and administrators, even teachers and school board members about requiring masks and social distance policies. None of these are really within our local control. Um, all of these are dictated by the Oregon Health Authority and um the Oregon Department of Education. So we don't have control over that. Uh, it'd be rather like complaining about the mayor for losing power, I think, um, when we had our our windstorm and ice storm. Um, also, starting this week with sports, actually, today, we had multiple games going on at Cambie High School. Fans are not allowed in attendance in any sporting event, which has also caused a large number of criticism to our principal, athletic director, coaches. Uh, and again, we have zero control over that to statewide requirement. So um, we have to uh limit or we would have to limit people uh who could watch in order to maintain six-foot distance. And I I don't know if the school district would choose differently if they had the ability, but they can't. Um, they can't make that decision. They don't have that authority. Um, speaking of sports, football is resuming this spring, um, which is weird uh because it's a fall sport, but everything's weird now. Um, once again, the high school is going to shoot off fireworks during football games. And um, so it it's odd because of the wrong time of year. The school is going to try and notify neighbors, and actually, I'm hoping that by um giving this announcement here, I can help um spread that word, too. The first game is going to be Saturday this week. And then we have two other home Friday games, March 19th and March 26th. So we will be shooting off fireworks during those games, I believe. Um, last week, the school board and teachers' union agreed to a new contract um memorandum of understanding. It's like an amendment to the contract regarding COVID um uh requirements and in-person instruction. The board uh will be back uh in action tomorrow, and on the agenda, they're discussing waiving all of the athletic fees. Also on the agenda are um, I believe, more complaints lodged against either the superintendent or a board member or both. Um, last time we had a meeting, I told you that there were six such complaints, four of them directed against board members, Stephanie Carlson, who spoke to us this evening, two of them against the superintendent. And um, so they're they have an executive session to discuss those and I think additional complaints. Um, most of these issues are really not related to return to in-person school, but actually, this uh, I think Facebook post that Stephanie Carlson liked, and then the superintendent was um like criticized her for that, and then um, people criticized the superintendent for criticizing the school board member. This is uh the kind of stuff that has been going on at our school board. Um, but the only other thing I have to say here is that um the library board um has only met once since I've been the council liaison, and that'll be coming up next week. I have made progress in recruiting a new high school student to serve on the library advisory board, uh, the one we have, um, who by all accounts has been awesome, um, uh, is graduating from high school. We've tried hard through COVID um this year to prevent that from happening, but it looks like she's still going to graduate. And um, so I I think I've got a ninth grader to replace her, and I just I told her um, to take two weeks, think about it, talk it over with her parents, because I haven't really looking for a four-year commitment for that. I will um, I I will say regarding that, um, I I I do stand in in disagreement from um Jordan's uh well-stated position here on the um the the material sent out by the library. Whether or not that was offensive, um, I I don't believe that any of us are really qualified to make that distinction. I don't believe it is the role of elected officials to censor the materials that come from a library. I think that's the role of the people who use the library, including parents. Um, you know, um, I I think that that there's really good arguments to be made that that is offensive content. I think there's a lot of other potentially offensive content, and we can pick straws here and there. Um, you know, uh, do they carry guns and ammo at our library? I guess so. I don't really know that, but certainly pacifists would find that objectionable. Um, you know, there's lots of things that lots of different people with different backgrounds and political opinions are going to find objectionable. That has never been the role of our public library system, going back all the way back to Ben Franklin, and I I believe it was he that founded the public library system, that um libraries provide materials and um people need to wade through that and choose to read or not not to read. Uh, I don't think that we serve our city well when we get involved in that. Um, so tha- that's my two cents on the issue. Um, they've already withdrawn the materials, so I I'm not sure how relevant this is anymore. But I just want to say, I think that um the city councils walk on a dangerous tight rope when we start deciding this is okay and this is not okay for our people to 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 look at. Um, the only other thing I want to mention to you is that a while back in the urban renewal meeting, I had had proposed that we streamline the process. I have met with uh the people involved in that, including Jamie Stickel and Carol Palmer. And um, we will, I believe, be coming back to the urban renewal board with a revised ordinance that provides for public comment as well as administrative staff approving some of these. So uh, that is all I have tonight.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Um, Counselor Hensley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have my liaison report, um, being that Sea Forest tomorrow and a traffic safety commission is next week. Um, but I do want to say that I echo the thoughts of Counselor Tibbles. Um, and to Counselor Banks' point, I would say that it it's not whether or not it's offensive. It was that a publication went out into the hands of children, as far as we know. Little Suzie could have gone down to the library to pick up her own books. And I think as parents, we can all agree that whether or not we find it offensive, it is an adult-themed book, and it had no business in the hands of kindergarten-to-high-school-aged kids. So um, it's it's not a matter of whether or not it offended anybody. I think we can agree it was an adult-themed content, and it did had no business being promoted to our children. Um, if there's someone wants that book, they can go find it. They know how to find it. They don't need to have it in a publication that is promoting it. And I would like to see some kind of accountability on the person who decided that we're just going to randomly put them into the bags. And that was like Counselor Tibble said, it's a new decision. It used to just be something that was set out on the table, and those who are looking for it could pick it up. I do want to thank Mr. Archer for your time today. I appreciate the conversation. I appreciate you pulling that material, and um I look forward to what you come out of with reviewing of the policies and processes so that we can assure that this never again. So thank you for your time on that.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Uh, Counselor Spoon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have a liaison report exactly because Kat uh is has not met. We have some interviews coming up for the open positions. Um, I will say that Bridging Cultures has been doing a couple of things. They've been posting on their Facebook page in Spanish locations and times of vaccine clinics. Um, and also, most recently, they've been handing out free PPE, um, which is particularly important because um marginalized communities are affected at a higher rate. So they have been posting on their Facebook page where and when you can get free PPE if you would like that. And that is all I have.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Spoon. Um, Counselor Vary?
Yes, thank you. I do have some reports tonight. Um, I will start with CTV. Uh, the most exciting thing going on over there right now is that uh football, as uh Counselor Banks had mentioned, is starting, and CTV will be broadcasting the games. Um, they are uh doing some fun stuff with trying to tap into a camera that's on the scoreboard and then stream that back to the studio, and they'll have some live people doing some play-by-play. So uh Troy Aikman, Joe Buck, we're coming for you. We're going to do better than uh you guys uh with our uh play-by-play announcing. Um, they are looking for people, though, uh, to be those announcers and play callers. So uh, I think I heard that uh the illustrious Mr. Mayor Hodson might possibly be one of them for the first game. I think they're still trying to get that commitment, so uh Gordon, if you're listening, he'll do it. Um, just kidding. Uh, the planning commission, uh, their last meeting was canceled, so we haven't met since the last one. Uh, but we did do some interviews for two new planning commissioners. Um, and so that you'll find that tonight in our consent agenda. And so that you'll find that tonight in our consent agenda. James Heeb and Jason Patton will be our new planning commissioners. So we're excited to bring those guys on board and see what they can do. At the Fire Board meeting, they pinned some new chaplains. As many of you probably know, Mr. Bill Roberts, who's been the chaplain for many, many years at Canby Fire, has retired. And so it's taken a couple guys to fill his shoes. But they brought in two new chaplains who have been around for maybe a little bit. But they also brought in a Canby Fire and Malala and Aurora have hired a joint fire marshal. So that's great news there as well. Canby Fire was also awarded the Program Department of the Year Award from the Special Districts of Oregon. So that's awesome. And I know we had a report from Chief Davis at the last meeting, but we were just kind of still reeling from the ice storm. So we were still getting a lot of information. They ran in two and a half days, get this, they ran 180 calls during the ice storm, in the ice. So major kudos to Canby Fire for keeping us safe. That was, that was great. And they are, they have approved the contract to build the Northside Fire Station. So they're building a Northside Fire Station. They have ordered one engine, one water tender, and one ambulance. So those are on order to be ready when the department opens. And then I'll just, lastly, I'll just kind of add my two cents as well as others have. We got it in the library. If you remove the title from the book and you just read what it's about, it's a how-to guide on oral sex. That's not okay. If you want to get that book, you can go find that book. Somebody saw that paper being put into the library bags. And if they didn't, if nobody saw it, if 65 of these went out and nobody looked at it or looked at it, saw the page, that's the bigger problem, is that we were putting stuff out that we didn't proofread, that we didn't check, that we didn't make sure was safe to go out. The library is supposed to be a safe and inclusive place for all people. And so if we're putting something out that is not safe for children, and our excuse is we didn't know it was there, our excuse is we've canceled that publication, so we won't do that again, and nobody saw it, that's where the problem is for me. When you take the title out of it, doesn't matter whether it's licking or whatever, when you take the title out, it's a how-to guide on oral sex that was potentially given out and promoted to children. That's a problem, and just canceling the publication is not okay. It needs to go further than that. We need, somebody needs to be held accountable. We need to know why somebody didn't see that. So that's just my two cents. And I could go all night on that, but people will disagree with me. But I think the bigger problem is the fact that that was in there and we didn't see it.
Thank you, Counsel Vermeek. Finally, Counsel Parker.
Well, I have an extensive report about the Traverso extension on the Malala Forest Trail, but I'll save that for our next meeting. It's coming up on four hours here. I try and find agreement with my counselors. And so, Jordan, I'll, I'll pull out what you said, that it's important to do what's right. And our oath of office was to uphold the city charter. And I would commend to you the reading of Article One, Section Eight, that the city council does not take issue with any employee other than its city manager. We had testimony from citizens tonight talking about line staff being unprofessional. Jordan, you kind of crept up to the point of, of talking about our library director. And Tracy, you talked about finding who was responsible. Sean, you did the same thing. Our charter specifically prevents us from doing that. We wake up every morning with one decision. Are we going to fire our city manager or not? And if the answer is no, he runs the shop. And I want the city employees of the city of Canby to know that there's at least one city counselor here who is going to stand up and say, we're not going to use the dais as a way of criticizing what you do when you're on the job and working for your city administrator. If we have a problem with this and we want to take action, we want to go further, as you say, Sean, then let's have an executive session and, and fire our city manager. But Article One, Section Eight says we do not interfere with the personnel rules of this city. And I, the last thing I want to do is set a precedent where we get to pick individuals in our city organization and criticize them for what they did? No way.
Thank you, Counsel Parker. I appreciate that. Jordan.
If I could just respond, I, I appreciate your passion on that. And as a rule of objectivity, Counselor Parker, I understand that. I think you mischaracterized my betrayal, my betrayal of that. I believe when I referenced a director of the library, I said, in an empathetic position, I understand that when you take a new position, that you have higher priorities than to review every piece of literature that is hanging around. I think that that's far from a criticism. I think it's a reality that I understand and I'm empathetic to his position, which I think you characterized me as different. So I'm going to get that straight right now. Second, I agree with you in what the city charter says. And I think that if we don't add where are the commentary of our concerns that are not being addressed, how will the city administrator know how we feel on these particular comments? And I think that the parents that are calling in deserve to know what our process and thinking this through is as well. So we talk about transparency. There was no individual callouts. If it was, it was in an empathetic way of understanding. There's a lot of responsibilities when you come on as a director. So I understand that that wasn't even on the radar. So I'm, I'm not going to accept you characterizing me that in that way, sir. But thank you, and I will commend again the action taken by the administrator of pulling it. And we can have this discussion in an executive session if that makes you feel more comfortable, Counselor Parker.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can we move on to the consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I move that we adopt this consent agenda, which consists of the approval of the minutes of the February 17th, 2021 City Council Work Session and City Council Regular Meeting, the appointment of James Heeb to the Planning Commission, and the appointment of Jason Patton to the, to the Planning Commission.
I'll second.
Motion's been made by Counsel Hensley and seconded by Counsel Vermeek to approve the consent agenda, which include the minutes of the February 17th, 2021 City Council Work Session and City Council Regular Meeting, the appointment of James Heeb to the Planning Commission, and the appointment of Jason Patton to the Planning Commission. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
A clarification for you. I believe we need to identify before approval the, the two, the two terms of the planning commissioners are, one is a partial term. I think we had, is there some information on that?
One ends on December 31st, 2021.
One of the, one of the terms ends on, on December 31st of 2021. So it's a partial term, and the other is a full, a full term.
Okay. So.
Which one's which?
What was that, Counsel Hensley?
Which one's which? I'll amend my motion.
So what were the dates on, on the, on those again? Sorry.
December 31st, 2021. So that's just this, the remainder of this calendar year, and then, and the other one is through 2024. So that's a full term.
So Counsel.
Who has?
So Jay, so the appointment of James Heeb to the Planning Commission for a term expiring December 31st, 2021, and Jason Patton to the Planning Commission for a term expiring December 31st, 2021, as an amended motion. Will that work for you, Counsel Hensley? Oh, sorry, 24. Thank you. Does that work?
Yes, I accept the amendment.
Counsel Vermeek is still seconding that?
Yeah. Yeah, and then I'll, I have a question for discussion.
Okay.
Just hoping we can get some clarity on why, who was, why, who was, why James was picked for the short term and Jason was for the longer term? Is that due to the positions in which they, they were replacing and when they were selected? Or how was that selection being?
I made that selection right now in the expediency of time.
Okay.
That honest answer. Counselor Bangs.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just curious, there were three applicants, I believe, and only two of their application materials were included in the packet. Was it you that chose the two over the three? I don't even know the name of the third. I'm just curious how that works, that process.
Sure. So with the Planning Commission, the interview process for that, it's the planning director for the city, the chair of the Planning Commission, the council liaison for that, and myself. So the four of us conduct those interviews. And so at the time, the first position that came open, the two candidates that were interviewed were James Heeb and Jason Patton. And then we had the second position come up, open, because the planning commissioner needed to resign because they bought a home outside of the urban growth boundary, and so had to vacate the seat. And at that time, we had a third applicant apply for that position, which we did interview as well. So based on the interviews and the questions and whatnot, the four of us deliberated over the, the three people, and, and those were the two that we felt would fill the role and, and the planning commission. Counsel Vermeek.
I, I would also just say that I think the reason there's only two in here is because it's only the two who have been selected. So you're, the third applicant would have not been on this package just because he was not selected.
Thank you, Counsel Vermeek.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
One more clarification. I apologize. We were adding on the fly and thinking quickly as well here, but the, the longer full term is actually, it goes through the end of '23. So it's, the shorter term is end of the current calendar year '21, and this, the longer term is through 2023. And that's, that's my final, that's my final answer on that. Sorry about the confusion.
Okay.
I'll accept.
So the motion has been made by Counselor Hensley and originally submitted by Counsel Vermeek to approve the consent agenda, which include the minutes of the February 17th, 2021 City Council Work Session and Regular Meeting, the appointment of James Heeb to the Planning Commission for a term to expire December 31st, 2021, and Jason Patton to the Planning Commission for a term to expire December 31st, 2023. Any other discussion? Great. All those in favor? One, two, three, four, five.
Hi.
Next. That carries six zero. City Administrator Business and Staff Reports.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have two items. First is just a general announcement to, to you, council, and to any community members that might be listening, but our, our ongoing efforts to provide an opportunity for our residents to drop storm debris, you know, limbs and down trees. We've been accepting material pretty well nonstop since very shortly after the storm event at a couple of park sites, and then we consolidated it to our Public Works Operations Center, and we've been continuously taking material there since then. And we've, I shout out to our crews. They've been working just about nonstop, literally seven days a week since, since the storm occurred. And I just want to let you know that our, so the storm debris drop site at the Public Works Site remains available through this Friday by appointment. We went to, we switched it to appointment only this week because it's been winding down. And so that, that is going to be through Friday where anybody interested, it's, it's Canby residents, we're, we're needing at this point proof of residency for those appointments by calling the Public Works Department. And so we'll be doing that through Friday, and then we plan to wrap it up. If there's an, if there's a, a need to continue that after that, if we get enough feedback, we will consider trying to accommodate beyond that. But if we are trying to shut down our weekend work overtime and let our, let our folks have a, a couple of days off, they haven't had a weekend off since this storm situation. So that's just an informational update on that. The second of, of my two items is I forward to you some information in advance. So I won't go through it in detail, but this is regarding the Clackamas County's Racial Justice Research Project. The county is embarking on a countywide project that will be related to the topic of racial justice. It has a lot of different layers to it. There was a, a couple of handouts that I sent you that described some of that work and what it entails. The, the county has asked all of the cities in, in Clackamas County if we, if cities would consider participating in the financial cost of this. It is going to, this project is going to take place over a couple of years, and the cost for the county is going to be between $250,000 and $300,000. The county is encumbering the majority of that cost, but they have requested that cities would consider participating in that by making a contribution. And essentially, we would be signing on as a partner in this. Regardless of that financial contribution, they're going to engage the cities irregardless. They're going to do this work across the whole county, including in, in our city. So it, you know, there's no requirement to do this. If, if we wish to participate, I have recommended a contribution of $2,500. That's in the range of what other cities have been contributing from the feedback that I've received. So I wanted to run this by the council because it will be something that I think will be visible. And it's not, I'm not running it by you, per se, because of the, the dollar amount, which i- is within my authority, but more because this is a, a visible project. And essentially, I would be engaging us as a partner with the county, and I, I didn't want to do that without running that by the council. So I wanted to just get your temperature on that. And again, if we were going to participate, my, my recommendation would be $2,500. And I can, I can work out the budget portion of that. So I don't know if you can kind of give me a sense of where you're at on that, or sort of a thumbs up, thumbs down, or, or just a straw poll, if you will. But that's my, that's my request on that, is just that feedback.
Thanks, Scott. I appreciate it. Bangs, did you, your comment, you just giving a thumbs up saying yes?
Yes, I was giving a thumbs up saying I support that, too.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Yeah, and this is a, this coincides and actually is the, the whole county piece with the diversity in DEI project pieces that are going on there at the county as well. And the director that they've hired for that, execution of that and whatnot, part of that project. So yeah, so any feedback on, on this piece? You know, I think this is a countywide initiative that the Board of County Commissioners is behind as well. And, you know, I think being a part of the dialogue is important for, for our city and for being a part of that, and that's table in the county. Counselor Spoon? Counselor Spoon?
Yeah, I emailed Scott earlier. I completely support both partnering and the contribution. I think it's important work. We have a racially diverse community and certainly a large underserved population, and if there are ways that being a partner in this project, being a part of the conversation and the outcome of the project can help us better serve our community, I think that we're all better off for it. So I'm excited to partner in this capacity and see the work ahead.
Okay. Counselor Vermeij, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I don't, I don't necessarily have a decision either way. I, I'm looking at the email. It came in late last night, and today was just insanely busy for me. So unfortunately, I have not been able to review the material. I just don't know if I can support it until I've been able to review the material. So I would ask Scott if we could maybe have until the next meeting to make that decision, so that, you know, those of us who maybe didn't have, you know, free time today to, to read through everything. It looks like, I mean, it's pretty big. It's a lot of, a lot of reading, and unfortunately, just I've had meetings all day today, so right up until we started. So I just, I would like to be able to read through this a little bit more before I say I support spending money on it.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I already had a discussion with Mr. Archer about this this afternoon, but just so that the rest of you are aware, not really wanting to discuss the, or debate the merits of the program. It's probably a fine program. Sorry, my cat's in the way. But I, I still stand firm on my, my beliefs that we shouldn't spend municipal funds on social issues, and this program is a social issue. And what, doesn't matter the merits of the program, it probably does fine work, but municipal funds don't belong in that arena, and I will always stand on that.
Counselor Tibbles?
And I would, I would agree with Counselor Hensley on that. I think it's a, I don't want to debate the, the merits, and I can go on the best, with the best intention that they do good work, but I think it's, when you get into debating which social issue you're, you're going to support with municipal funds and which ones you are not, it's a slippery slope. So I would not support using municipal funds for, for that reason.
So you're for, for us being involved, but not necessarily spending the funds? Counselor Tibbles?
It sounds like we're going to be involved whether we want...
Yeah, yeah. I mean, if the county's going to do it, the county's going to do it. We don't have any control on that, but I wouldn't back us, I wouldn't back it. I couldn't support it.
Financially, you mean?
Financially.
All right. So I'm not sure if we, so it sounds like there's, yes, some, I guess a majority say support it. You're not sure on the funding piece. Counselor Spoon?
Yeah, we don't really have to vote on the money, right? Because it's well within the limitations that the city administrator has given. Like, if determination to spend the money, he's able to do that regardless. We're not voting on whether or not, he's just looking for a temperature check, right?
Yeah, I, that's the key. And so, I mean, yeah, Scott and I can talk about this further tomorrow and, and, you know, take the, it sounds like, yes, we're going to be involved, and if $2,500 is, is that's the piece, then I, then I think we're moving forward. Yes, Jordan?
Well, no, to be clear, I, I'm not in, I'm not in support of it. Financially, there's that reason, but I think it's the picking and choosing of social issues. It's not just a financial piece.
Oh, so you're, you're talking about not wanting to be necessarily engaged at all?
I realize that the county is going to do what he does, but I think picking and choosing social issues that the city supports us. I think we've all said pieces about, pieces about that, so I don't view that standard as any different now.
Counselor Parker?
Well, I think that in our values statement, we've already talked about an inclusive community. So I think that this is merely in line with a policy statement we've had for at least a decade.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Um, all right, I know Counselor Vermeij wants to read up on it. I will touch base with, with Scott over this before the week is out, because I know that the county's looking for an answer in terms of involvement. You know, either yes, you know, we're, we're involved, and if there's a monetary component to it, then, you know, we'll, we'll have, I guess, that conversation even tomorrow and bring back or have, circle back on that piece or use this amount going forward. Okay. Anything else, Scott?
No, that's all I have. Thank you.
Um, is there anybody in the wings there for a second round of citizen input at all?
There, there are no, nobody else wanting to speak, Mayor. There's nobody else wanting to speak.
I guess action review, then.
You've approved the minutes of February 17th and the appointments of Jason Patton and James Heeb to the Planning Commission.
It doesn't sound like a lot after four and a half hours, but we'll take it. So there's been a lot more than that. So thank you, Melissa. Appreciate it. I will take a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
I moved.
Non-debatable motion. All those in favor of adjourning? That's, and anyone opposed? Six zero. Counsel, good night. Staff, good night. Thank you. Canby, good night. Thank you as well.